We've got to stay on schedule. Okay, we're just waiting for Channel 35 to come up. Tell me when, okay, okay. We're okay? Okay, again, good morning, everyone. Councilmember Jan Perry, and this is the Energy and Environment Special Meeting, and this is a special meeting because we're co-meeting with the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power Board of Commissioners who are also present. And we're going to proceed because I want to stay on schedule. We are in Room 340, the John Ferraro Council Chamber. It's about 9:02 a.m. on Saturday, June 4. Now, I'm going to ask our Chief Legislative Analyst, Rafael Pareto, to make a few comments about what is on the agenda today. And I'll make a few comments, and I will ask Mr. Sales if he will make some remarks on behalf of the Commission. And then we'll have Mr. Nichols speak, and do some Q and A, and then I have some cards from the public. And if you are here from the public, you wish to speak. There are officers, Sergeant-at-Arms here, who will take your speaker cards, which are located in the back of the room. And we intend to stay on schedule, so let's begin. Mr. Chief Legislative Analyst, please tell us about the agenda, and I believe it's a one-item agenda today.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair. Rafael Pareto with the CLA's office. You have a one-item agenda this morning, which relates to presentation from Department of Water and Power relative to their financial plan, challenges, revenue requirements, and so forth.
Thank you very much. Now, to set the stage, the purpose of today's meeting is to create the foundation for greater transparency as we move forward in the public-on-the-record discussion on the challenges ahead that include the possibility of rate increases. Now, in order to foster greater cooperation between the Board of Water and Power Commissioners and the City Council, we have come here together today. Now, in many ways, this is a process or a way to get a diagnostic approach to the Department of Water and Power so that we can work together in a very public way to address these issues. Now, we are not voting on anything today, just to be clear. We are not being asked to make any decisions today. Today is just the beginning of a process for understanding the department's challenges and what lies ahead. And I would like to just say publicly and on the record, one of my goals is to make sure that as we move forward in this discussion, we move forward the will of the voters simultaneously, the Office of Public Accountability, and the Ratepayer Advocate, so that not only do we create a new template for discussing and analyzing the possibility of rate increases, we honor what the voters passed this last March. We have an office in place with a Ratepayer Advocate in place so that we have a third disinterested, impartial place to turn to for information, so that not only do we, as elected officials, or appointed commissioners, or the public, or the ratepayers, have the option to make informed decisions with unbiased information. Now, with that, I would like to turn over for a few comments your Board President, Chairman of the Board of the Water and Power Commissioners, Mr. Tom Sales. He has a few comments, and then we can proceed with our meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Good morning, y'all. My name is Tom Sales, and I am the President of the DWP Board. I want to thank all of you for coming here today. One of the things that I did when I became President and when Ron Nichols became General Manager is we made a commitment to the city and the ratepayers here that we would have a much more open and transparent process. For those of you who don't know, I was, in my view, kind of born a DWP. My father worked there for 35 years. I'm a ratepayer. My mother is a 91-year-old ratepayer. My children are ratepayers. We're all ratepayers. And we want to make it real clear that we want to do the best that we can to be not only transparent, but also keep the rates as affordable as we can, consistent with our safety and reliability requirements. As the chairperson said today, let me back up. I really want to commend Chairperson Perry for the spirit of cooperation that she's worked with the DWP as well as the other members of the City Council. It is important that we work together because we are all part of this city. We're here today, though, to really lay out the financial situation of DWP, so you understand that. We want to make it clear what we're required to do under law. We have no choice. What we think is prudent to do in order to maintain the liability, because there's one thing that's become clear to me, and that is that the people of this city want, deserve, the lights to come on, and the water to flow. They don't want any delays, and they want it to happen immediately. So with that, I actually am going to turn this over to, I believe--
Yeah, we're going to ask Mr. Nichols.
Mr. Nichols.
Yeah.
I do want to say about Mr. Nichols, though, he is a-- we are very fortunate to have him. It is unusual-- I've been in the power business for over 20 years. What is most unique about Mr. Nichols, though, is he's not only familiar with the power business, but also the water business. That's a unique combination. And with that, I think I'll turn it over to--
Yeah, Mr. Nichols, yeah. And for those of you who may not know, Mr. Nichols, he's here at the small desk in front of the lectern, and he is going to make a comprehensive presentation to all of us that I believe you'll be able to see on your flat screens and up above us here in the chamber. So with that, Mr. Ron Nichols, if you would proceed. And then after he's done, we will give a few questions, and then I'm going to make sure the public is able to speak. I will take all cards on Item 1. Since there's only one item, we're going to call everybody, okay? Thank you.
Okay, appreciate that. Very much appreciate the opportunity to be with you here this morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, President Sales, and our Board of Commissioners. I have with me as well our Senior Assistant General Managers for our water system, Jim McDaniel, our interim Chief Financial Officer, Ann Santilli, Aaron Benjamin, who is our Senior Assistant General Manager responsible for power, and Lorraine Pescott, who is responsible for environmental sustainability programs as Senior Assistant General Manager as well, and several of our staff to support that, to the extent we want to get into even more detail than we have here. I'm going to take about 30, 35 minutes, and we're going to cover a lot of information here today, to review at a high level our operations in both water and power, and to get a better view of some of the challenges and mandates that we're dealing with that affect our costs going forward, and make some comparisons in general of those costs against what our revenue picture looks like, and what the effects of some of those changes and challenges that we're dealing with have on those costs, and how that in turn has some effects on our financial situation.
You want to take the other--
I think you want to be clear--
Thanks, okay, thanks.
Move this. The-- We are-- we're working for you. We provide a service to you, our customers, and we do that on a 24/7 basis. And because we recognize that our customers not only are legally mandated to receive, but deserve safe drinking water and reliable power, and we do that for 4 million people every single day. And I know we think a lot of us, when we think about our water use, we might think about how many glasses of water we drink, or how much water we might use in a shower, but when you add that all up for over 4 million people, we deliver over 450 million gallons of water every single day. This is a big-scale operation. And it's similarly large and even larger on the power side. We think as residents, we have maybe 500, and if you have a larger home, maybe 2,000 kilowatt-hours a month that you use. When you add up all those homes and all those businesses, and it's an enormous amount. We're providing over 77 million kilowatt-hours on an average day, and that doubles on a hot summer day. And I know you've heard me here, both at the Council and before our Board, frankly boast about what we've done in the way of meeting the 20% renewable energy, and we are proud of that. But that comes down to a lot of pieces in that supply, and some of the larger ones of that are well over 500 wind turbines that provide that, and millions of square feet of solar panels, and almost 150 megawatts of small hydro, small, very environmentally favorable hydro projects. There's just a lot of things that make up the pie. And a lot goes on behind the scenes when we're-- when you're dealing with serving water to 4 million people. The scale of operations is just is one thing. It requires almost a quarter million water tests, water quality tests, every year, just for our-- making sure we have safe water and we're protecting our environment. And this next picture here, and by the way, I believe we have copies of these handouts, so you should all in the audience back there, I believe you can follow that to the extent that these screens aren't possibly as clear from the back. This next picture here is not some new form of unusual lawn bowling. This is actually something where our people-- I'm very proud of what our staff has done, to come up with an innovative way to put what we call shade balls. These are little round plastic balls that float on the top of our reservoirs. Our first try to use this, and we're going to use it more extensively, is a much less expensive way to cover our reservoirs and meet some of the water quality requirements that we do. This is going to save us millions of dollars for our customers, you, going forward. And while I'm really particularly proud of that type of innovation, I think it's important to recognize how huge of a role you, our customers, have performed as well. We need to do more water conservation. We can't do that without our customers, and our customers have responded incredibly well. I don't think it's a well enough known fact that due to what our customers have done, we are the lowest per capita water user of any major city in the country. And for LA to get that is a huge accomplishment. And while we do that, we still have-- with less water, we still have a very major water system. And it's keeping on top of the size of this system, and meeting quality and meeting reliability is a huge effort. It's a constant effort. It's a 24/7 effort that we need to do. And we run into that same sort of challenge on the power side. We have an even larger power system. I mean, just as an example, we have over one-quarter of the entire transmission grid of the whole state of California with LADWP. And we have-- well, we have some 7,000-- over 7,000 miles of water pipeline. We have double the miles of electric distribution lines in addition to that transmission. It's a big-scale operation that requires a lot of effort to keep it going. Now, I've just explained at a really high level, you know, kind of what we are, what we're about, what we do. And this March, as Chairwoman Perry indicated, our voters voted to expand what we are and what we're about. We now have, and will have soon, a ratepayer advocate that will become a part of what our organization does and deals with as we go forward on that. We support that. We've budgeted for it. We've planned for it, and we're ready to move forward in a very collaborative way with that ratepayer advocate as soon as they're on board.
Yeah, I want to be real clear on that, though. From the Board's perspective, we absolutely support the ratepayer advocate, and we stand ready to make that happen.
And one of the big drivers-- I'm going to spend a few minutes on another area here that's important, too, the big driver of our system and our costs. The water and power industry generally, particularly in the U.S., but globally, is really undergoing a very major transformation. And Department of Water and Power is literally at the epicenter of that. And one of the reasons for that being is, of all the laws and the mandates and the changes that have happened, it affects us more than any other utility in California. No one else is impacted as much as these requirements for changes as we are, and it drives a lot of our costs. For the power system side, we are looking at major laws and regulations at the state that change our system. One really big example, and there are many more, is that over 70%-- over 70% of our existing electric generation is going to be replaced in the next 20 years. That's just a huge change. And that's-- many of those, most of those, is before the end of their normal useful life. The water side is similar. State and federal regulations there are changing our system. We have major capital items listed and shown here on open reservoirs in Owens Lake, changes to how we treat our water, and investments to do that, and also to meet state mandates above and beyond what we're already doing in water conservation by 2020. Now, this next slide starts getting into, you know, perhaps a little more detail than we might want to drill into, but I think it's really important. One of the major things that's-- the transformation that I've talked about in this industry is focuses significantly on our power supply. These two charts here, and I'm not going to go through them in great detail, but I really want to point out an important shift. The one on the left just shows the mix of our power supply today, you know, what-- how do we create the energy that we get delivered to our customers? And you'll see that big black slice of that pie up there is coal. It's almost 40% of our total power supply today. Before 2030, before the next 20 years, we will completely eliminate that coal. We will replace that with more energy efficiency, with getting up to our 33% and maintaining at least that 33% 2020 and beyond, and then converting virtually all of our natural gas plants to new, high-efficiency plants, and then burning much more efficient and much lower carbon natural gas. That is a sea change to have that happen that quickly. And the water supply picture is about the same. Again, a big transformation that we're dealing with there is on the supply of water. We've got things in our system and distribution and delivery, but the supply is a big change. And this shows a similar type of comparison. This pie at the left shows what our mix, kind of average mix, has been over the last five years. And over half of that water today is purchased water from Metropolitan Water District, imported water. And within the next roughly 25 years, we're going to cut that amount of imported water by more than half. And we're going to do that, not with other imports from other sources, but principally with reclaimed, recycled water, much more water conservation than we're doing today, stormwater capture, and cleaning up groundwater aquifers so that we can collect and use that water. That is an enormous change. It's a change we have to do. It's good business, and it's good for the environment. We're talking about huge shifts here. The shift to replace 100% of our coal, 40% of our supply, in what will really be 15 or less short years, in 15 years in utility planning, is like a snap of the finger. It took us 80 years to get where we are. We're going to make this kind of a change in less than 15, but we will achieve that kind of change. And as we look at the water side, you know, we know that we're dealing with requirement to eliminate our ocean water cooling. It's a mandate. But we're not just getting rid of our ocean cooling. We're going to use zero water after we make this change. No water will be used to cool our gas-fired coastal power plants. And that-- this is dry cooling. This is like having huge radiators like you have in front of your car out there to cool these plants. It's a major investment, but we'll do it, and we'll do it right. As I indicated earlier, we're covering or removing our reservoirs, our open reservoirs. We have about six of them that are still open. That's particularly important in that Department of Water and Power has the largest number of open reservoirs of any water system in the United States. So it's a big-ticket item. It's an important item. But we don't plan in a vacuum either. We work with other agencies. We work with other bureaus and departments in the city and on a regional level to integrate our planning for water, for stormwater, and for wastewater, because all of those entities at the same time are going through similar change, and we've got to plan for it together. I want to turn to an item that sometimes has maybe a little bit of controversy. The Owens Valley, which was the original source of our-- of all water supply for Los Angeles. We-- there are critical issues around that since our founding. I don't think it's probably well-known that we have spent in the last decade over $1 billion in achieving 90%-- 90% reduction in the dust from our actions in the Owens Valley. And we've restored the Lower Owens River, and we have more to go on that. We have more to pay on that. There's more dollars to come as we continue to move down that path. And through that process, we also use half of the water that we used to bring in from the Owens Valley to meet our customers' requirements. But we have, in addition, that-- getting to that other half of reduction of our imported water, the MWD purchases, a very bold plan to reduce those purchases, again, in half by more local water that I indicated before. That is a huge change that we're dealing with. Those items alone are huge. Achieving this kind of transformation of supply is something that we closely have to watch our costs as we do that, and we are. But irrespective of watching our costs, no matter what we do, all of these things cost more money. And they-- we're talking about a multi-year commitment and multi-billionaires dollars a year on-- combined on the water and the power side to do that. And if that was just that transformation enough, it's a tough hill to climb. But on top of that, we've got an old system. Our water and our power systems are over 100 years old, and if we're-- to deal with that, we have major replacements and repairs that we have to do to that. On the water side, just as an example, you know, the average life of a water main is about 100 years. It's a pretty long time. But we have a number of them that are about that age, and obviously, each year, they get older. Our current budget that we have right now has a replacement frequency of every 400 years. So we've got something that lasts 100 years, and we're replacing it at a rate of every 400. That doesn't work long-term. It's not sustainable. We don't have a budget that keeps up with the replacement that we need to do on the water side. And the power system is very, very similar. Power-- a lot of our power system and our lines and cables generally don't last sometimes 100 years. And yet, at our current budget that we have, results in a replacement rate, on average, for those items about every 150 years. That is not sustainable either. And we all know about the pipeline breaks that we've had, and when our pipelines break and our power lines deteriorate, it's not just a matter of inconvenience. It's an issue that can put at risk the health and the safety of our customers and impacts to our environment. These are things that we need to take care of as we move forward. There's two really big issues that are driving our finances, and that is, you know, that this transformation we talked about and fixing the reliability of our supply, of our system. Both of those things are very capital-intensive. The utility business is a very capital-intensive business, and given the condition of our system and those types of transformations, those types of mandates that we need to change, makes it even a bigger issue that we need to plan for at the department. And we can't incur those types of costs and just pay for them in the year that they hit and put those costs on our customers. We have to finance that. We have to spread this over years. It's just like-- just like you don't go out and buy a house with the cash that's in your wallet, you enter into a mortgage. We have big mortgages, and we're going to be having bigger mortgages as we go forward. In the last two years, between Water and Power, the department borrowed over $2.5 billion, with a B, dollars. And more is needed to make the transformation. More is needed to put dollars into this kind of reliability improvement that we're talking about in our system. Combined, we're going to have to do $1.5 billion each year for the next five years to provide that safe and reliable service and to meet the legal mandates that are on us. We can't do that with our current revenue levels. We're going to have to increase that. We need to have adequate financial reserves so that we can go out and borrow to meet those requirements as we go forward. Now, I just want to take a minute to talk a little bit about-- put a little bit of this in perspective. Our water system has an annual budget right now of about $830 million a year. That's, you know, that's what we spend each year to run our system. Back in the last few years, traditionally, we borrowed about $250 million a year in addition to that. In the last two years in the water system, we borrowed nearly a billion, and over the next four years, we're going to borrow over another billion dollars. And that's just for our water system, and we can't do that and pay for that at our current level of revenue. And the power system is a similar, but even more pointed picture. This graph here shows, back on the left side there, 2006, we were at about $4.2 billion of borrowing. In the next five years, we're going to jump that up to over $10 billion. We're going to spend over $4 billion in the power system in the next five years as well. That requires some pretty major borrowings. Now, last year, I don't want to dwell on this because I know we could spend a lot of time talking about this. Last year, the department came to the Council to request a rate adjustment, and we didn't get one. And as a result, we had to cut costs. There were a number of costs that were cut before I got here, and those were in some areas that we didn't want to cut. They were in renewable energy. They were in energy efficiency. They were in our water capital and O and M side of things, and our pipe replacement side. We cut over $270 million between last year and the beginning of this current calendar year because we didn't have the revenue that we needed. When I came onboard, the first thing I looked at is, where are we on costs? And said, we still have to cut more. And I didn't want to look at programs. I thought we cut, you know, a lot in some of those fundamental programs, programs that are important to our future. So I looked into what can we do in the basic business items, the things that make us-- the day-to-day things, and we've talked about this in the past, that cut over $440 million out of that budget over the next three years, just in the basic running of the business items to be more efficient and make sure that we're spending only that which we need to do, recognizing that we've got all of these other types of costs that we've just been talking about. So I'd like to kind of take a few minutes here, if you'll indulge me, in talking about the water and the power system, to give just a general picture of what things look like going forward. This chart here, on the left-hand side, shows the basic components of our current budget in our water system. And the other big blocks that go to the right there are the next three years, three fiscal years, of what our basic is. And this is just for our basic business needs. This doesn't meet all of our requirements for things that we want to do and should do and other investments. This-- we're going to talk here about our basic business needs. That's one big piece of the dollars. Another is investments that we need to do in the future. We're going to talk about both, but-- We're going to talk about both, but this is just the basic business needs. So if we just took our, our current, you know, rate levels and continued those on, that's what that black line is. So the gap between those is the difference between what our budget for those years are and what our current rate levels would fund. That's a problem. And the picture is pretty similar on the power side. Again, this is just our basic business needs. This isn't all the things that we need to do, but this shows same sort, same picture. Those are increasing budgetary costs of the things that we just need to keep the business running and meet our legal mandates. And this is what our total revenue would, would be right now if we went forward at the same type of structure that we have today. Now, we're being as cost-effective as we can, but you can't just keep cutting programs and costs forever and still meet our customer needs, meet our mandates, and make the types of investments that we need to do. I know I'm getting into a lot of numbers here and, and I'm throwing a lot at you, but I would want to give a, a picture of, you know, what are these, what are some of these costs of some of our mandates? What are some of these basic business needs? And this is looking at the water side. Next year, just the, the regulatory mandates that we have on the water side, we'll need to spend approaching 300 million dollars next year and almost one and a half billion over the next five years just to meet our mandates. And it covers these things that like they're on there of Owens Lake dust mitigation and covering those reservoirs or bypassing them and, and the water treatment facilities to meet the, the safe drinking laws. On the power side, it's a, it's a similar and larger picture in that regard. Again, looking, this is just our basic business needs and just looking at the mandates, just looking at the requirements that we have, we'll get almost 600 million dollars in the next fiscal year and over 3 billion dollars over the next five years of things like our, our solar program, incremental renewable portfolio contributions for our, for our renewable supply. And meeting that once-through-ocean cooling elimination for our coastal plants are just some of the key examples of that. That's on the mandate side. You know, the other big piece of our basic needs is going back to, we talked earlier about the need to invest in our, our system and getting better reliability. This, this graph here gives you a, a view. There's this, you see that red dashed line in this, in this graph? That's today. And everything to the left of that is historically what we have spent per year investing back in our power system to improve our reliability, to cut down on the frequency and the, and the length of our, of our outages for our customers. And we ramped that up. We ramped it up because we've had to. We've got that old system and, and we didn't like where we were in our reliability of service. Going forward, this is a, is a basic business need, we've cut that. I've actually talked with other people, we've cut next year back from where we had been. I don't want to do that. But, you know, is, is the system going to collapse by not doing that? No? Probably not. But it's not a path that we can do. We then have to start ramping back up to get back to where we were on a go, as we go forward. The water system's fairly similar picture. We have to the left, same sort of picture, to the left back there is '07, '08 through our current, excuse me, fiscal year. As you can see, we have steadily ramped up each year, putting more money into our, to our water systems. It's helped. We've actually reduced our, our outages and our, our pipeline breaks, even though we have over 1,300 a year right now of, of some level of breaks or blowouts. But in this kind of basic case going forward, we're slowing that down. We're keeping it level, even though our requirements should be going up. I don't want to be doing that either, given where we are in our replacement cycle, but near-term, that's kind of the basic case. That's, that's what, that's, that's what we're looking at. We're going to drill into even a little bit more detail here and I'm not going to go through all of this, but I, I think it warrants a little bit more time to get a, another feel for how things do add up. Again, this is, this is not talking about our future strategic investments. This is just our basic business case. And these numbers here show kind of over the next three years, what's the average annual cost of, of just the things that we need to meet and mandates? And here's the water system here. And I want to point out just kind of three things on here. You can take a look at this at your leisure, but there's a couple of things I want to point out here. One, the biggest item on here, and you'll see the same thing when we turn to the power side, is, is protecting our ability to borrow. Well, what's that mean? You know, that, that means that you've seen that we're doing massive capital improvements that we have to do at a minimum over the next few years. We've got to borrow money to do that. And just like when you, if you were going to enter into a mortgage or even these days, sign a lease for an apartment, you've got to be able to show that you've got the financial wherewithal and the reserves above and beyond those costs to do that, to get an adequate credit rating to make that work. We need to have that adequate credit rating and those are the types of dollars that we need to have just simply to make sure that we can make the types of borrowings that we're talking about. And you'll see a couple of items here that have negatives on them. They have reliability investments in water conservation in this basic case are down from where they want to be. I don't want to do that. But, you know, in the area, those are the only areas where we have kind of some short-term discretion. And I don't think we should be doing those cuts. And the power system shows some more major items that we, that we have on there. Again, the biggest item here is that, that financial item of what we need to do to make sure that we have the, the funds and the financial reserves to borrow those monies going forward. And the big cut is actually a significant cut, an average annual cut over the next three years of over 133 million dollars in, in reliability investments. Now, I just ran through a bunch of numbers pretty darn quickly with you on that. I'm going to take a quick breather here and, and make a, you know, an explanation for, for what that was. You know, those were just for our basic business needs. That's doing what we have to do to keep the water flowing, keep the lights on, to meet our legal mandates, and to do a reasonable, but frankly, not enough, investment in our reliability of our, of our system. And I'm almost done with this presentation, so bear, bear with me. But this next piece, I think, is probably even more important than that because these costs that I just talked about here, these don't really do anything for our strategic investments going forward, the sort of things that, that we need to do to meet the objectives that we've laid out in our integrated resource plan that we spent so much time in the public on and our, and our urban water management plan. Those are investments above and beyond, in many cases, what we're, what, what we've just talked about. We have a need to make a commitment to invest now for more in our reliability, so we start fixing that age system, to do more in both water and power efficiency, to do more in a long-term, sustainable way to meet our requirements in a, in a, in a way that, that will make both business and environmental sense for us. Investing more for now, for example, in more water conservation, in more water recycling and stormwater capture than was indicative in that base sense is something that's just good business because it's going to save us more money in the long term and it's going to allow, allow us to do it with, with local water. But we're going, we don't have as much as we should have, frankly, in that basic budget to do that. There's a lot of items, but here's some examples in here and I'm, and we're not going to go through each and every one of them, but there are some strategic water investments above and beyond that basic case that we should be doing on pipeline work, on, on that, some of that local water supply and conservation that, that we need to do. And, and here are some, you know, ideas. This is three-year total additional cost at levels that somewhere within those levels are, are the types of investments that we should make. And there's, there's policy decisions by that. We want to get input on that. We're not going to make decisions for you on that because there are policy decisions, but we will help inform on that. And the same thing on the strategic, strategic power investments. Again, these are all incremental investments to those basic costs that we were talking about earlier on, more in energy efficiency and a, a better renewable portfolio mix than, than, than we would otherwise do, better reliability in power, and starting on early coal replacement for which the dollars go up during these kind of three-year look-ahead, but starting to make that investment here over the next, the next three years. Those types of investments, those types of areas, is there some discretion in that? Yeah, there is. There's some. Some would say there's not. There are key policies associated with those and we want to get our customers' input. We want to get our stakeholders' input. We want to get council and our board's input on this. We're going to go through a process over the next couple of months of an intensive set of public workshops, leading up to action by, by our board of, of Water and Power Commissioners in, in August timeframe, and then rolling this over to the Energy and Environment Committee in September for, for, we hope, action by, by the council in early October. And, and there's a reason for this timeline. You know, we talked about all those costs. We saw how the costs were marching up. We saw how we made a bunch of cuts. But our level of revenue today is below where our costs are. We're in a deficit mode today. So we need to move forward. We need to get our, our revenue levels up on or before the end of this current calendar year. And we want to get input from our customers on what sort of things we, where we have some level of discretion, discretion that we can and should fund, what the priorities are on that. We'll have a number of, of dates and locations that are in your handouts. We'll have, probably additional meetings on top of this. We'll have a website up to get information. We'll be able to provide that information as well, once the ratepayer advocates onboard to be able to get that information package for them too. I know I've covered a lot in a short, period of time here. I hope it's given you a picture of what we're, what, what our challenges are. I believe we can meet them and I'm looking forward to getting, getting input on our plans as we go forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Just for the record, let the record reflect that Mr. Krikorian from Council District Two has joined us. And what we will do now is I'll ask a few questions and ask Mr. Krikorian and then we'll turn to the commission members. And just a quick announcement, we have this room until 11 o'clock. I have 60 speaker cards here, so I'm going to, I wanted to announce this now so you can think about how you want to revise your comments. I'm probably going to be able to give people just one minute each so that as many people as possible can speak on the record. Now, the Chief Legislative Analyst Office and the Chief Administrative Office, CIO Miguel Santana, and our CLA is Jerry Miller. We have Representative, Mr. Santana is here today and Rafael Prito is here on behalf of the CLA. We'll work jointly to prepare a website as quickly as possible on the city's homepage to receive public comments regarding the Department of Water and Power's financial plan and related matters. I think this is going to be something that will be extremely helpful to all of us because it gives you an unlimited opportunity to give extensive and detailed comments for us to review and respond and, and to note. So I don't want you to feel like that today is the last chance that you'll ever have to say anything about this because it won't. It doesn't stop here today. Mr. Nichols, a quick question. Well, I'll make some very quick questions because I want to have, afford everybody the opportunity. Now, state legislation requires utilities, including the Department of Water and Power, to generate 33% of its energy from renewal, renewables resources by 2020. I'm not sure if my memory serves me well, but I think the Board of Water and Power Commissioners set a goal of 35% by 2020. And if that's the case, which goal are you pursuing and what's the cost differential between the two?
Well, it's a great question. Number one, our board hasn't officially made a change on, on its, on its, on its goal. Our plans, as we've laid out here and the, and the types of dollars that we've talked about, and just to be clear, built into that basic budget number that I talked about was meeting, meeting the requirements, continuing the 20% under, under the NOW law that changes a goal to a mandate and ramping that up to 25% by 20, by the end of 2015 and then ramping up to 33%. We're, that's in our basic, basic, basic budget. I'm planning on that at that point as to whether we ramp up beyond that will be something that our board could take some consideration over in the, in the future. Near-term, just ramping up to that 25% number in the, in the next, in the, in all the years that we've talked about in terms of these, this three-year window gets us to that 25%.
So the cost, cost, so you haven't had an official position that you adopted, so the issue of whether, what the cost differential is, is not really one that needs to be pursued at this time?
Well, and that moreover, I'm not, not prepared to be able to give you what that delta is. We could, we could get back to you on, on what that could be.
Right. Okay. The latest status of cleanup legislation associated with the state renewables mandate, I don't know if you recall, I did have some concerns about protecting local control while still working to attain achievable renewable portfolio targets. Now, is the cleanup legislation at the state level factored into our concerns for local control and what's the department's perspective on that right now?
Well, the cleanup legislation is still working its way, way through. And then in, in addition to any cleanup legislation, there's how does the California Energy Commission, who's tasked with implementing the legislation, how are they going to take what are pretty broad goals and fairly general requirements of the law? We have included in our plan, and we could certainly drill into it more, a significant amount of, of, of local solar in, as, as part of, as part of that plan. And we will meet the, we will meet the requirements as you, I think you're probably well aware, there's restrictions on the amount of out-of-California and out-of what we call balancing area locations that you put new renewables. And we're mindful of that. Our plans are consistent with that to put as much locally here as we can in the way of new, new renewable generation. I will make a point, though, our base case relies significantly on the lowest-cost near-term, near-term option, which is a, a strong reliance on, on biogas as, as a way to meet the requirement, which does meet the standard. Frankly, I think one of the things we'll want to talk about more and we want to get more public input into is, is that the best long-term plan? Are we better off to put more, more local solar? Are we better off to put more wind and, and geothermal and other renewables that provide renewable power gener, renewable power generation as opposed to renewable biogas that gets burned in our, in our power plants?
Okay. I have about three more quick questions, so I'm going to defer to Mr. Krikorian and we'll go to the commissioners. A quick question on whether or not the department, the department intends to offer a feed-in tariff and will you be establishing or re-establishing, I'm sorry, a solar incentive plan? Do you have funding for either program? And just give me a quick synopsis of what's the status on your utility-built solar program.
Gladly, and I'll try to make this quick. Three great questions. A little bit of a, of a chicken and egg issue that I'm probably getting a little ahead of my skis on this, to be honest with you, because as I know you, council and, and your committee has, has requested that we evaluate a 75-megawatt solar feed-in tariff. And our board has not yet taken an action on that, but at, at the risk of getting ahead of my board, we did include that in our plan and this basic budget in here. It doesn't really hit significantly until some of the later years. So near-term, in our next fiscal year, it's, it's a pilot program to get it right first and it doesn't ramp up until later. We're going to be presenting this to our board along with what are the numbers associated with what that ramp up to get to 75 megawatts is. I consider that part of a mandate. SB 32 says thou shall invest and, and 75 megawatts is our pro-rata share of that, of that legislation. We could talk further about that and we'll be talking further about that with, with our board who somewhat uncomfortably have to talk about that before they've had an opportunity to share that discussion.
All right.
On the local solar, yes, we're moving forward with two, two plants, a total of about 22 megawatts. We've, we're moving forward on those plans now. And yes, we did temporarily suspend the SB 1 solar incentive program, but we will be restoring that plan and we have built those dollars into that restoration, that continuing that forward at a very good, solid rate going forward, even more quickly than what was in there. And we're able to do that if we finance it, we can actually do it more quickly at a lower cost to our customers.
So I wanted to know the status of infrastructure improvements associated with the last rate increase, which was about, I think, three years ago. Will the department maintain additional rate increase dollars for that intended purpose or has that money been redirected? And if it has been redirected, can you tell us where?
Well, the money's not been redirected. On both the water and the power side, if you kind of think back to that, that graph that, that we had, we have, we've been ramping up, been ramping up on both water and in power in the last, in the last couple of years. Water stays about, about, about the same, which is... Water stays about the same, which is more than it had been in previous years. Power does in this basic plan. Power takes a dip in this next fiscal year, trying to find areas where we can reduce our costs, and then ramps back up again. But we've not redirected those dollars anywhere.
Okay. A more recent rate increase for water-oriented infrastructure, I think that's associated an issue that's probably near and dear to many people's hearts, these water main breaks that we had over the past couple of years. And it appears, at least anecdotally, there's been a decrease in the number and the size of water main breaks, been substantially curtailed. But give me just a quick snapshot of how the department's doing in terms of dealing with this aged infrastructure issue on the water mains, and what we've done to be able to mitigate that. I know we worked with USC, I'm not sure if you were here at the time, School of Engineering.
I was prior to my tenure.
Yeah, you just started, I think.
Well, we have, and we could present some better, and will present, by the way, some more information on this when we go through our public workshops in the coming weeks. But we have spent more money, and it's having benefits. I mean, the curve's coming down. The number of breaks, the number of major leaks that we've had in our system is on the downward trend. But it's from the downward trend at a pretty high starting point. So, we're going the right direction, but we got to keep it up, and we got to keep funding it.
Thank you. All right, we're going to ask Mr. Krikorian if he would like to make a few questions, ask a few questions. Then we'll go to the Board, Mr. Sales, and you can take over that portion, and then we will get to the cards.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Yeah, I have a few. In fact, I have questions that could last the rest of the day. But I'm not going to do that, because I think this is a tremendous beginning of a conversation that the DWP and the Board and this committee is having with the public. So, I want to get to the public as quickly as we can. But I do want to take a moment to thank you, Madam Chair, and all the members of the Board for coming together in this, you know, historic, I think, first-ever joint hearing like this. And I think it's encouraging, Mr. Nichols, for us to be having this kind of a conversation with the public. It's been long-awaited. It's been long-awaited, and I think this is a great first step. So, as you know, Mr. Nichols, I have a very strong interest in both our water supply mix and our power supply mix. And I want to ask you a few questions just on those points first, on Slides 16 and 17 in your presentation. And we can start with the water supply mix. The projected changes that you've assumed in these slides over the next 25 years include a very dramatic increase in the use of recycled water, in fact, a tenfold increase, and a 50% increase, it looks like, by my math, in local groundwater. And I want to know just what is necessary to get there? That's a huge sea change in how we look at our reliance on water. What's it going to take for us to meet those goals?
It's a lot of different actions, and at a high level, we have, part of that is some of our major water recycling programs. We have a major project that we're doing with West Basin Water District right now that's about a, Jim, about a $32, $34 million project to put recycled water out of hyperion and give it down to some major industrial users who use that instead of using potable water, so potable water can go to our residential users. We have a lot of smaller programs that aren't funded, to be clear. Some of those that are not funded in the base plan that need to be funded to get there. We have a requirement to then, we want to do more stormwater capture. There's not a lot of places you can capture big stormwater volumes, but there are up in the valley. But to do that, we got a contaminated groundwater aquifer there that we have to clean up first so that we can store that stormwater and put it in the ground to then use it later. So, there's that. There's some smaller distributed stormwater capture programs. It's a lot of different moving pieces, an awful lot more difficult than just simply calling up and taking a water order from MWD, but it's the right thing for us to be doing.
It is, and I want to congratulate you for, you know, especially for the stormwater capture assumption there. I hope that we can be even more aggressive than that, because there's no question that it's exceptionally cost-efficient to be using stormwater that's generated locally rather than importing water from 500 miles away, especially when you realize that 25% of the state's electricity is used to move water around the state and treat it. It's absurd. And so, the more that we can rely on San Fernando Valley and other groundwater reservoirs, the better off we're going to be. There's also an assumption of 9% of the water mix by 2034 being from conservation. And I think that the conservation measures that we've had to date are one of the great unknown policy success stories out there. DWP and Met have both, you know, done a phenomenally successful job of water conservation. So, I'm just wondering if that's achievable? I mean, is it really? And what, again, what will it take for us to add another 10%, another 64,000 acre-feet onto the conservation side of the ledger?
Well, we do believe it's achievable. Will it come at probably a little higher price than what we paid in the past? Probably, you know, because your point is well-taken. That's incremental, you know, it's an incremental 64,000 acre-feet on top of the 100,000 acre-feet of water conservation that we've already done as of today on an average-year basis. So, it's a lot, but we believe that we can get there. Part of it's pricing, part of it's investment, part of it's just, number one, it's just the continued action and reaction by our customers that have done such a great job, as I talked about earlier. So, we just have to get after it every single year and keep on it. It is a supply. Conservation is a water supply that we need to have as our first priority.
Right. Moving quickly to the power side, so we can get as many of these cards in as we can. So, there's Slide number 17 shows the transformation of our power mix over the next 20 years. And I guess my first question is, the critical timeframe that every policymaker has been talking about with regard to renewables is the next 10 years. So, we make an assumption, we're showing the change over the next 20. I'm wondering, where will we be in 2020? And if you have that available, particularly with regard to renewables and energy efficiency? So, I guess that's my first question. Where's 2020?
Well, 2020's kind of partway in between, obviously, 2010 and 2030. Now, 2030 number is really probably more like about, you know, 2025, 2027 timeframe as opposed to 2030, but it looks about the same a few years earlier than that. I don't have the exact numbers here. We will have cut our, we will have eliminated our Navajo Power Plant before 2020. So, there's 480 megawatts of current, and our most carbon-intensive resource that we will no longer have in our mix before 2020, that will be replaced by a slice of that energy efficiency, a slice of that 33% renewable, and a slice of that more efficient natural gas between that. I don't have the exact numbers. We'll certainly gladly get back to you with that.
If you could follow up with that, please. And I think most of the people, many of the people here who are watching will be especially pleased to see that that pie chart shows zero coal in 2030, and I hope that we will get to that goal significantly before 2030 as well. Along those lines, we're also reducing our reliance on nuclear. Very good. I'm wondering why the drop in large hydro? I would think that that would be a larger slice of the pie.
Well, it's actually more of a function of the size of everything else. When you, so let me, without spending a whole bunch of time on this.
There's fixed availability.
Well, yeah, what you've got here, we're including and showing as a supply, which it is, energy efficiency. That's energy we don't use. That's energy that doesn't have to get produced by any of those other slices of that pie. If you took that slice out, nuclear and hydro and everything else becomes a larger piece of the total of what we actually consume. So, that's the only reason that you're seeing those drops in some of those numbers.
One final thing, the once-through cooling mandate, which is, of course, a significant cost driver here. Can you talk a little bit about flexibility and potential flexibility that there may be in the timeline for complying with that mandate?
Well, I wish there were some flexibility in that timeline. We have, and we could spend a lot of time talking this, so I'll just hit it at the high level. We have three plant locations on the coast that use once-through cooling, 14 different units at each of those, and they're on very tightly confined sites that we have to operate. Those plants have to run and have to operate just to be able to keep our power supply stable and reliable. We have to, so we have to keep each one of those running while we replace them. It's kind of like fixing the bicycle while you ride it. So, as a result, we have a plan right now that every single year, we are replacing those plants as quickly as we can replace them to get that done. To do anything any quicker than that means you're going to have to take some portion of those plants out of service while you replace them. And we could talk long, and I'm happy to, at another opportunity to get that done. We start with, you know, we're starting with Haynes, we're doing Haynes 5 and 6. We'll end by 2013. We then go to Haynes 1 and 2, and then go to Haynes Unit 8. And, excuse me, let me move on to Scattergood. We moved up, one of these, our biggest ocean water cooler plants is Scattergood. We moved that up first, so that will be done by 2015. Our biggest consumer of ocean water gets done as quickly as we can get that one done, which is a change in our system. So, we're moving forward as quickly as we can, but at the end of the day, we have restrictions on how quickly we can do that and still provide a reliable supply to our customers.
Great, thank you. I just want to again thank you and thank the Chair and the Board for the openness of this discussion. In furtherance of that, my office is live blogging this hearing right now at our policy blog, and any of you can provide comment to us on that blog or by messaging us at cd2policy.blogspot.com. So, thank you very much, Mr. Nichols. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so, Mr. Sales, why don't you step in and see if your Commissioners and you would like to ask questions, and then we'll go to the cards.
Questions from the Commissioners. Commissioner Parfry?
Thank you, President Sales, and thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Krikorian, for your comments. It's very clear to me that by the many dozens of representatives of the environmental community and the Neighborhood Council, this is a very good way to start this conversation. Thank you very much. So, Mr. Nichols, currently, what are our under-collections on the power system?
Well, we...
What's our operating sort of under-collections today?
Well, our, it's kind of two different pieces of them, but all in, there's north of $280 million of under-collection. And just to be clear, that isn't a matter of people haven't paid their bills. These are costs that we have incurred that haven't made their way into our revenues and our budget, because we don't have the budget or the revenues to pay for that. And so, it's, they're not there, and as we, you know, you can say, well, how do you do that? Because we're not the federal government. We can't print money. Wish we could. But utilities can do that. I mean, you can do that for a while, as long as you have a clear path that shows your way back out. And we can find a path on our way back out and spread that over and over years and turn that curve back around. But by, you know, we've used some of our rate stabilization dollars, that is a special fund of money that we can use to do that. We run out of that pretty much by the end of this calendar year. You know, by along the November timeframe, we're to a point where going another roughly $14 million a year a month in the red.
$14 million a month.
A month, right.
Yes, all right. So, there's some urgency associated with it.
There's significant urgency associated with that. We just simply can't continue that beyond the last quarter of this year.
Thank you. Now, I was very interested in the slides on the strategic investment, and it strikes me that the case that you're making is that if we wisely invest some dollars today, we will be protecting the customers and decreasing their bills in the near term. Could you elaborate on some of those needs, especially in the area of energy efficiency? It's my sense that if we implement strong energy efficiency measures, we can protect the customer by lowering their bills overall. I can think of just one example that comes to mind, and I'm positive there are dozens of others, that LA Unified School District has a tremendous need to retrofit their air-conditioning units in their schools. By that simple task, they could potentially save many tens of millions of dollars, which in turn could be spent on our children. And I would like you to just elaborate on some of those considerations.
Sure. And clearly, when you're looking at the range of different types of power supply sources and energy efficiency is a power supply source. It's the energy you don't use and don't have to generate from any other source. It's one of our lowest costs. I mean, there's some things about energy efficiency that are more expensive, and there's some things that are lower cost. Generally is some of our lower-cost options. And, you know, we can, we are doing that, we should be doing more of that. It does cost. We do have to invest in it. And we does have the wrinkle that we need to make sure we're mindful of, that as we reduce our total energy, our fixed costs get allocated over a smaller number of units of energy that we sell. So, it's just a reality, and we take that into account. I've taken that into account when I've shown what these annual costs are. It's the type of thing that, to that customer, that gets that energy efficiency through a combination of an incentive or an outright purchase and investment by the department, that customer gets that benefit, and their bills go down, and that's a great thing. To the extent that you're not that customer that gets that benefit, you're paying for that other customer to do that, to the extent that the payment that we're making to make that other customer's bill go down, that kind of co-invests with us, because that's what it is. They put some money in, we put some money in. To the extent that that's cheaper than generating power, we all win. But, you know, we need to make sure that we've got the funding to be able to do that.
So, it's an investment with an assured return for the utility?
It is.
So, last question. I recall a few years back, when we passed a budget at our commission, our energy efficiency budget was around $90 million. So, the basic business case budget that you were proposing this morning, I saw a figure of $25 million. Is that accurate?
Well, it's a little bit of apples and oranges, so let me explain that to you. It's actually about a $50 million commitment in each year. So, part of that, that $25 million, and it's considered as part of that, it's kind of operation and maintenance, current costs, current expenditures, and part of that, we're financing. You know, this is an investment, and we hadn't done much of that before. So, one of the things that I did when I came in is said, let's look at some of these things that are really long-term investments in avoiding power production requirements. And it's just like a power plant, so we know it's going to last. Some of that can be financed, just like we finance a power plant. So, the annual cost associated with that goes down, but we're making in this basic budget about a $50 million per year commitment in that basic budget. And part of that is things on programs that we've committed to. Part of that is trying to get as close as we can to that, to a state law that guides us to do at least 1% per year. Is that enough? No, I don't think it is enough. And that's one of the things that I want to get, have us have some very open discussion in these public workshops, and get into what is that, what incremental amounts of energy efficiency should we be funding? What's that going to cost? What's that going to mean with respect to our rates? So, we're doing this with eyes open, and we get the costs and the benefits associated with that.
Thank you.
Other questions from Commissioners?
First of all, I would just like to say that I appreciate how you and your staff have really, really done a fine job of trying to balance this potential rate hike issue with state and federal mandated regulations, replacing aged infrastructure, and also trying to have Los Angeles be an example to other major municipalities, not only in the United States, but worldwide. I understand how difficult of a juggle that has been. I understand how difficult of a juggle that has been, but I do really appreciate the complete transparency that you've really, really honored with our fellow ratepayers and City Council, so I want to start with that. I also want to commend you for being open to our Board's questions and probing about competitive bidding. I have great faith that that's taking place in a very honest and fair practice, and as a Commissioner, I'm going to continue to ask questions when I feel they need to be asked. I also appreciate the staff advising us of alternative options that you're considering, whether it be, you know, replacing iron and steel plumbing with plastic, or trying to incentivize water-free urinals. It seems like you've been very, very open to comments that I've personally received in the private sector about things that may be good for the city and the repairers at large. I also had the opportunity to go to your main site facility and was very impressed with how you do stay above technology, by using infrared technology to anticipate issues and resolving those potential issues before they became major, major dollar issues that not only could lead to multimillion-dollar repairs, but potential litigation. So, I commend you on that as well. My question, just being sensitive to the lower socioeconomic communities in Los Angeles, if there is a rate hike that is substantial, will there be special financing for those families that are really struggling, given the economic situation that our city and country are in right now?
Well, we do have, we do have low-income programs. We've made some improvements in our level of funding of those. I think we need, there's more improvements to be made on that. I think in addition to just outright funding, one of the things that we really are want to look into, and we want to have some more discussion about this during this process, is looking at, one of the things you get is that area of the population that is least able to invest in energy conservation is the low-income population. So, often fine on a per-square-foot basis, you know, maybe a little different than the McMansions, so we'll kind of put that aside, but on a square-foot basis, often low-income have a higher energy use than others because they can't invest in the types of things that lower that. We need to focus on that more. That's an opportunity where, to the extent that we can direct more of our energy efficiency programs at that customer segment, and at that social strata, I think we can get more, frankly, we can get more bang for the buck. It's a win-win situation, and then we're not in a situation of having to try to put more and more dollars into a direct dollar subsidy through a light heat program and things like that. This isn't something that you change overnight, but it's a direction that I think we need to go, and it's something we need to look into as we look at our priorities.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from Commissioners?
I have one comment and one final question. I really want to commend the Department on this $440 million in cost reductions. As you know, at every meeting, we ask hard questions about every contracts. Every contract, often we irritate the staff, that's fine with us, because we know we are spending the public's money, and we take that very seriously. We're going to continue to do this. $440 is where we started. We're going to continue looking at every single dollar we spend in this department. Secondly, it is very clear that we are dependent upon our ability to borrow money in the future. And if you look at the chart on page 43, where you talk about protecting our ability to borrow, it's $175 million. Can you give us a sense, Mr. Nichols, that if our bond rating went down just a notch, what that would cost us each year in terms of cost that ratepayers would have to pay because they'd have higher borrowing cost?
Yeah, I can. I think, you know, there's a lot of complexity to do that, but let's look at the big piece. There's other things in addition to that. But we've got about, on the power side, I'm going to recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have about $1.2 billion of variable rate debt. That means, it's like you're, it's kind of like a big version of an adjustable-rate mortgage, if you will. That cost of debt right now, today, in this interest rate environment, is like less than 1% annual interest rate. It's wonderful. Thank heavens we have that. But we've got $1.2 billion for that. We got that, and we have that based on maintaining our current credit rating, that's rated by the rating agencies. If we get below our financial metrics and drop a credit, a level down in our power system, that flips out. You're no longer meeting the covenants that you agreed to when you did that. It's just like you're no longer qualifying for your mortgage. And we have to now flip that out in relatively short order, and that becomes fixed-rate debt. And today, that, if you're at a worse credit rating, it's probably something north of 5.5% annual interest rate on that $1.2 billion of the mortgage. Long and short, that's about $50 to $60 million a year higher costs for which we get nothing. The banks get more money because we didn't meet, hold up our end of the bargain to keep our financial position the way it was, and they get that money. That's more than our annual present plan for energy conservation programs, for which we get something. For that, we get nothing on that incremental interest cost. So, it's really important that we not get there.
Thank you. Madam Chairman?
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Sales. Appreciate it. And I'd like to call up people in groups of five in the hopes of getting in as many people as we possibly can, and where there's a timer on the lectern, Mr. Nichols, you might want to slide over and sit with the Commissioners so you can see. First five people I'm going to call are David Pettit, Mark Ryavec, Dr. Clyde Williams, Jack Humpherville, and Christopher McKinnon.
Good morning, Councilwoman Perry, and I want to begin by thanking you for setting up this joint meeting this morning. It really is unprecedented, and we, I appreciate it. I'm a lawyer with NRDC here in Los Angeles. We've been very involved in energy matters, electrical energy matters through the years. I want to take my one minute and comment on two things. First is efficiency. Mr. Nichols said state law guides us in terms of the 1%. My view is state law requires us to get to the 1%, and the environmental laws of our state apply to LEDWP just like they do to everyone else. DWP is over a year late with its efficiency study. I understand Mr. Nichols just started, but we need to get going on that, and I think you're right. It's like finding money under a rock. Let's get going and let's do it. Secondly, I'd like to talk about the OTC business just recently. I'm happy to see the slide that says you're eliminating it, but you really aren't saying when. I'm aware that only a couple months after the State Water Board issued its OTC rule, LEDWP was trying to sabotage it, and currently, that process is ongoing. And in fact, I know there's a spot bill that's up in Sacramento so that LEDWP can delay the state regulation if it doesn't get what it wants administratively. I'd like to see at the end of the hearing a commitment from DWP that it is going to comply with state law, comply with the Water Board rule on OTC.
I'll make a, I'll make an even better deal for you, Mr. Pettit. I will ask the Chief Legislative Analyst to draft a motion based on what you just said so that we can examine that motion specifically in committee and on the record.
Thank you very much.
His name is Rafael Prieto. He's right here, and I'll ask him to come back there and see you so that we can go over the verbiage that needs to be in the motion.
Thank you very much. I'll stick around.
You're welcome. Mark Ryavec?
Good morning. My name's Mark Ryavec. I'm, was the founding Director of American Oceans Campaign, and now serve on the Ocean Council of Oceana, an ocean protection organization trying to save the world's fisheries. I also want to address you on the OTC matter, and since Mr. Pettit has already raised the question, we'd simply like to ask that DWP and the City Council stop its attempt to amend the 2020 deadline and to include in your financial planning the funds to do the changeover from OTC to the dry cooling process. Just visually think about 30% of all the fish and seafood that are taken from San Diego to Santa Barbara. That's how much the three DWP plants, along with the nine other generating plants, destroy every year. 30% of all of the commercially recreationally taken fish. So, we appreciate, Ms. Perry, your bringing a motion on that, and we'd be happy to consult with you on the language.
Okay, great. All right, again, and Mr. Prieto's over here on the side, Mr. Ryavec. So, before you leave, come to the rope and get his card, and then Mr. Cottolano is also here, and they, we work together. Mr. Cottolano works for me. Okay, Dr. Williams, and then Jack Humpherville, then Christopher McKinnon, or McKinnon.
Dr. Clyde Williams. I'm El Serena, LA 32 Neighborhood Council and DWP liaison for that council. The numbers are so big. Can anyone really get their mind around $1 billion? Not really. I've always recommended, put it as a rate for a median household user, to make it real to people. That is, like, the budget, the general fund budget. Eh, it's roughly $8 billion. Divide that by 4 million, that's $2,000 per person. Household, $8,000. That is something people can deal with. I personally, hey, my bill is only roughly, say, $600 a year for DWP, excluding all the sanitation and sewage. So, can I stand a larger increase? Yeah. I recommend that the budget be increased. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Humpherville, Christopher McKinnon, and then William Ernest Schenowork, and then Jay, I think it's Gonzalez. Is there a Jay Gonzalez or a Jay, somebody from LAUSD? Okay, I can't read your writing. And then Arnold Sacks. Okay, Mr. Humpherville.
My name's Jack Humpherville. I'm with the Greater Wilshire Neighborhood Council. I urge Council President Eric Garcetti to quickly stop the delay and form the ratepayers advocate. He watered down the measure back in November with regards to the March ballot. Eighty percent, about 80% of the people approved Measure J. Secondly, is I think this presentation is good, but there's no specifics. How much are the rates going to be? What is the balance sheet? What are income statements? What do they look like? We want to know specific rates, very specific rates. Thirdly is Prop 26. What is the impact of Prop 26 going to be on these rate increases and the city transfer? Fourthly is the city. I think the city needs to chip in at all these great, on all these, help us defer some of these expenses. One way I would propose is that the city frees its $254 million city transfer fee at a flat rate, as opposed to being 8% of the revenues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Humpherville. Mr. McKinnon?
Christopher McKinnon. I'm speaking as myself today, as a ratepayer that has removed his tariff and does collect stormwater in four rain barrels. I also serve as the Mar Vista Community Council Rep to the Recycled Water Advisory Group, a joint effort of the Bureau of Sanitation and LEDWP. That's the 1% sliver going to 8% in. I wanted to comment on dollar values. In the past and in the future, it looks like the dollar will be devalued or decreasing in value. So, any money borrowed or spent today could be repaid in the future with cheaper dollars. And the ratepayer advocate, I think, should also be sensitive to the needs of the environment and the health of the public, not just the lowest rate at any price. So, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. William Ernest Schenowork, Mr. Jay Gonzalez, I think, and then Arnold Sacks. Is Arnold Sacks still here?
Yes.
Okay, come on up, and then David, David Lefkowitz, okay, and Sherry Akers. Okay.
Okay, my numbers indicate that the AB 32 plan will fail. Basically, we should keep the coal plant. There's no environmental benefit from getting rid of it. The combination of windmills and backup airplane motors uses the same amount of natural gas as combined cycle. If we burn gas in combined cycle and use less coal, Mexico imports more liquid natural gas, so there's no net CO2 benefit. And I've already let my yard die, so I can't save any more water.
Thank you. Next speaker, I'm not sure how to pronounce your last name, a person from LAUSD. I can't read your writing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Jay Gonzalez. I'm from Los Angeles Unified School District, and thank you for holding this meeting, Commissioners and Mr. Nichols. We're your largest customer. You know, you can think of it as like Dancing With The Stars. We step on each other's toes all the time, but we keep on dancing. In terms of being the largest water and power user in the city of Los Angeles, we have a great opportunity to continue our partnership and be a key part of your strategy moving forward. In addition, we also touch conservatively 2 million residents in the city of Los Angeles, which is about half the customers that you serve. So, anything that we do together benefits the entire city of Los Angeles. We are engaged in a lot of conservation programs, one of which is our Shared Savings Program, so as we reduce our use of energy and water, and the students lead this at their school sites, 50% of those savings go directly back to that school site. You know, like, we are facing a tremendous budget crisis, which is reducing the number of our teachers in our classrooms and increasing our class sizes. So, anything that we can do to partner together will have a direct benefit for all the students of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes, thank you. Good morning. Quite an impressive dog and pony show going on here. There's much discussion from the Board and the Director regarding costs, but yet no comments on expenses. Let me give you an example. If you go to Costco and buy the 24-pack of World Taco paper versus Charmin foreply, that affects your costs versus expenses. If you have lunch at a Taco Tuesday versus lunch at the Biltmore, remember there was a big controversy about the DWP Board of Commissioners about 10 years ago having lunches at the Biltmore, that affects your expenses. Transparency? There's a direct correlation between the more transparency is advocated, the deeper the muck. A ratepayer advocate started in the CAO's office, moved to the Controller's office, and ended in the DWP. At what point did you advocate for the ratepayer advocate? Because according to the newspaper articles, when Patzouris was Director, he advocated for the ratepayer advocate. Transfers versus property tax. Last year, there was controversy about the transfer. This year, no transfer's been announced in this year's budget from the DWP. How come?
Thank you. Mr. David Lefkowitz, and then Sherry Akers.
Hi. My name is Dave Lefkowitz. I've been a utility, energy, water, and environmental consultant for 25 years. Commissioner Sales, you may remember the many years I served with SoCal Gas. I'm just a citizen with a passion for the city and an interest in serving in the position of ratepayer advocacy, and I have no way of understanding what the process will be for applying for that position or being vetted. And I think it's a critically important position for the future of the city. I'm wondering when there's going to be a public announcement about what that process will be and how that process will unfold, so that other people like me, who are experts in the field and who have a passion for this topic, will have the ability to apply.
Thank you. Sherry Akers, Jim Stewart, Andy Schrader, Sharon Lee Ford, and Reverend Dr. Robert Shore-Goss. Sherry Akers.
Thank you for this collaboration. My name is Sherry Akers. I became an environmental activist so that I could face my grandkids. I'm also co-chair of the Mar Vista Community Council Green Committee, and we passed resolutions last year both to get LA off coal by 2020 and in support of developing a feed-in tariff plan. Our system of community councils provides the perfect vehicle for grassroots education and outreach to accomplish change, and I urge the DWP to take advantage of us. I'm grateful for the opportunity that you gave us and that Councilman Rosendale awarded us to hold a series of sustainable works, green living workshops, and green business consultations in Council District 11. I believe that we'll demonstrate that expanding this program throughout Los Angeles will increase efficiency to generate far beyond the 8% you have planned in the power supply mix and the 9% in the water mix. I would also encourage you to change the name from ratepayer advocate to stakeholder advocate, so that we're focusing not just on the rates, but on the total sustainability. Advocate, so that we're focusing not just on the rates, but on the total sustainability of the system. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Stewart.
Hi, I'm Jim Stewart. I'm a rate payer on Westlake and also representing the Sierra Club here. And I am really disappointed with this presentation, Mr. Nichols. The point is that we're in a global warming crisis, and to have this chart say thirty-three percent by 2030 is ridiculous. The science is terrible. We're going to hell. You guys gotta get with it and move to a hundred percent renewables by 2030 or 2040. Okay, go for it.
Andy Schrader. And then Sharon Lee Ford. And Dr. Robert E. Shore-Goss. And then Sherry Lear.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for this meeting. I've been a DWP customer for 17 years in Los Angeles, but I grew up in Flagstaff. I've seen the Black Mesa and Quayinta Mines. I've seen the destruction that Peabody Coal caused the Navajo and Hopi reservations, and especially their aquifer. I have friends there. We must not abandon them. They need reparations from us in the form of clean energy jobs. Maybe back then, we didn't know any better, but we know now. Now we have renewable clean energy alternatives. That's solar, that's wind, that is not coal, that is not natural gas, that is not biogas. There have been over 1,400 tornadoes so far in the U.S. this year, a record, causing over 500 deaths with damages of over $16 billion. The climate is changing. This is not a moral choice, this is a moral imperative. Not to adopt clean energy as soon as possible is to consign millions of people to death and destruction. We must remember Joplin. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Lee Ford.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to speak. We sat here and we listened for a good half hour about the financial woes of L.A. DWP. We all have financial woes. I am a retiree. I have, I am on a limited income. So I can't, I can't sympathize with you, because we are not moving this city forward. The ills that we have of open reservoirs and cleaning up the Owens Valley and our, our pipes breaking are all brought on by a lack of foresight from the city and through maintenance at L.A. DWP. So I urge the city to actively start moving off of coal, clean up our water supplies, our underground reservoirs, eliminate these balls on these open reservoirs that are not just for pollution, but are also for evaporation. Buy locally higher union labor.
Thank you. Dr. Robert E. Shore-Goss. And then Sherry Lear. And then Alice Druffel, Alice Druffel. And then Eugene, I think it's Hern, Hernandez. And Carrie Westbrook. Your honor.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Reverend Dr. Bob Shore-Goss, and I represent the MCC Church in the Valley, which is a temp to be a green church. And we made the earth a member of our congregation several years ago, because we believe in the earth and believe that coal hurts and it creates global warming. I'd like to address the efficiency issue about solar panels, because we have been in the process of acquiring solar panels and going through the Department of Water and Power process. We're now in month 17. It's been over 35 days that we have passed all inspections. We're still waiting for a meter that goes forward and backwards. Doesn't take that long to install a meter. And I'm raising the question, because if we start wanting to promote this, and we should do every public building in the city, school, fire department, police, library, with solar panels, we will be generating a lot of renewable energies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sherry Lear. Thank you, everyone, for your time. My name is Sherry Lear. I'm a resident of San Pedro. My family and I, we not only compost everything that we can, we have an organic garden, low water landscaping, and we collect rainwater and dishwater. I'd like to see our city commit to getting entirely off of coal by the year 2020. I know that this can be done. It will not only help pollution and global warming, but it will create jobs here in Los Angeles. Clean energy will create a green economy, and I think that the city of Los Angeles has been leading the way in some of this down where I live, the Port of Los Angeles. Our Clean Trucks program has been extremely successful. We have Portek LA, who's working with green businesses. I think there's a lot of things that can be done here, a lot more to get us off coal by the year 2020. I'd like that to focus more on renewable energy, energy efficiency, particularly solar power. I'm not for natural gas, and I'm definitely not for fracking. So thank you.
Thank you. Alice Druffel, Eugene Hernan, Carrie Westbrook, Matthew Hirsch, Liz Croissant, or Croson, is she here? Okay. And Michelle Garakian.
Hi, my name is Alice Druffel, California Interfaith Power and Light. We work with faith community, and we up present thousands of rate payers in our congregations in Los Angeles. I'd like to say ditto to everything the woman just said. But also, I have a message from Stephen Trimble, who is the Director of Utah Interfaith Power and Light. And he says that the IPP power plant, from which we are contracted through 2027, which we need not be contracted through 2027, we need to get off by 2020. He says that it lies directly upwind from 2 million people, some people that are affected by the worst air quality in the nation with extremely high levels of particulates and ozone. And air pollution kills at least 200 Utah residents a year. The IPP plant contributes directly to these air quality problems. And there's a saying in Utah, that with the six municipalities in California that get coal power from Utah, it's, the saying goes, California gets the juice, Utah gets the crud. So we have to speak for the people in Utah as well and get off of coal as soon as possible.
Thank you. Eugene Hernan, Carrie Westbrook, Matthew Hirsch, Liz Croissant, Michelle Garakian, and then Celestine Arnt, if you can come on up.
Hi, Mr. Nichols. My name's Carrie Westbrook. I live two blocks from here. I'm a low-income resident, and I wanted you to know, low-income people are concerned with renewable energy, and we very much would like that. I'd also like to say, you have my address, you all have here from the comment box. Please send me the information concerning the differentials, as well as the L.A. Public School information as well. I'd like to receive that. I'd like to invite you to check out Democracy Now!, also, that talks about coal mining and talks about the danger and death that's involved with that and how we need to do it. Oregon, Vermont, Colorado seem to have a very good program as far as renewable energy. They're miles ahead of us. Maybe we should study them and get some help for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I miss Eugene Hernan? Are you, are you Eugene? I had a card for someone named Eugene Hernand or Eugene Hernandez. Is there a Eugene Hernandez here? He's gone? Okay, great. Matthew Hirsch.
Yes, hi. As you said, my name's Matthew Hirsch. Hi, everybody.
Are you, okay, thank you.
I, earlier there were talking about the 100-year pipelines that need to be replaced. And it seems that coal is very similar to that. We have been going along these ways, and now we're at this moment where, just like the pipelines have been gushing forth, and we have to clean up the mess, here we are with, with coal, the exact same things are happening. So on behalf of the kids who don't even have a voice, and we're affecting their future, I'd like to just add my voice as well to, just all, to the need for replacing our current energy, like coal, with things like a solar wind. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Croissant. And then Michelle Garakian, then Celestine Arnt, then Teresa Brady, and then Ann Snackman.
Good morning, Chair Perry, members of the Commission and Committee. My name is Liz Croissant. I'm the Executive Director of Santa Monica Baykeeper. Baykeeper strives to protect and restore the coastal and inland waters of all of L.A. County. We've been working and advocating for the phase-out of once-through cooling, or OTC, an outdated mechanism that sucks in billions of gallons of seawater and kills marine life and habitats for several years. These power plants include those owned by the city of L.A. We were successful last year when finally the state board passed a policy that would phase out L.A. DWP's OTC by 2020. Despite that fact, the policy was a compromise, and L.A. DWP has made three unsuccessful attempts, both legislatively and administratively, to circumvent that policy. Right now, there's a fourth attempt underway. So I welcome the Chair's statement that we, that you will bring a motion on this issue. It's a very important issue for Santa Monica Baykeeper, for our members and our supporters. I also urge you that any plan that you rely on by DWP, that you require them to substantiate their claims, that's an issue we've had a lot of problems with in the past. Thank you.
All right, if you'd like to follow up, the gentleman you can speak to, his name is Rafael Prieto. Rafael, would you put your hand up, some people? And you can meet him over on the rope at the end of the meeting.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Michelle Garakian.
Hello.
And then Celestine Arnt, then Teresa Brady, Ann Snackman, and then Lawrence Zeiss.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commission, General Nichols, General Manager Nichols. On behalf of the Los Angeles Business Council, we would like to recognize Mr. Nichols for his effort to put DWP on a path that is both fiscally responsible and forward-looking, in addition to the Commission. As we move forward, we ask you to consider the below to help customers cope with their rising energy costs. Shoring up and growing DWP's energy efficiency programs, which are hugely important to align business, hospital, nonprofits, schools mitigate rising energy costs. Implementing 75 megawatts of rooftop solar through the Feed and Tariff Program through 2014. Continuing to fund the Solar Incentive Program, SIP program, through 2014. We believe that these priorities can and should be paid through the base rate requirement. It is essential to act now on energy efficiency and cost-effective solar for Angelenos, both renters and owners, as this will allow residents to mitigate rising energy costs and get L.A. off of old coal technology. Thank you very much.
Celestine Arnt.
Yes. My name is Celestine Arnt, and I'm from Encino, California. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you today. I was very impressed with the presentation today, but I wanted to add some comments. I'm not going to cover many of the points that I brought with me, because they've already been covered. But the two things that stand out for me today, as I listen to this, is you've had two offers of help to educate the public about the urgency of this issue and the dilemma that we're in with our debts and the need to conserve. And I hope you will follow through with the two offers of help from the school system, the person who represented the school system, and the city council, the councils around the city. I think that's a wonderful opportunity to educate our public. I also want to just read one brief message that I got from the UN. They send out bulletins periodically. It's, and I quote, "Current agreements aiming to limit global warming to 2 Celsius, degrees Celsius, do not go far enough to reduce the effects of climate change, because before they become catastrophic and irreversible." This is the woman who's the head, the Executive Secretary of the Framework for Convention on Climate Change. And she said, "We need to target to 1.5 degrees centigrade rise. Otherwise, the rising seas will overwhelm low-lying coastal countries, and rising temperatures will devastate subsarin agriculture. L.A. is a low-lying community, and we, our agricultural sector would be devastated by rising temperatures."
Thank you.
Please call on your citizens to do more. We need to get this sense of urgency to everyone. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Teresa Brady, Ann Snackman, Lawrence Zeiss, Annalisa Amato, and Paula Simeon.
I'm here supporting the, the getting off of the coal, but I also support a lot of what Sherry Lear said. Actually, everything she said about no natural gas. And, and I also agree that we, we have to get off of nuke completely. And I think we should keep the, the low-income and senior and disabled rate, because they're being hit at the state and the federal level pretty hard, and we don't need to hit them at the city level as well. And I think that bonds should be reserved for things like solar and wind, which pay for themselves eventually. And they also are, they, they produce energy after they're put in, and they, they, they don't waste. And I also really think that the water ticketing for people let water into the street, I appreciate that you said that it's imported water, because it is. It's like putting bottled water down the gutter when people are letting it water, you know, the street. And they, also wanted to say, I appreciate being a part of a public utility district, because it's a nonprofit, rather than like Edison that is wasting money on nuclear left and right. And I really appreciate that.
Thank you. What's your name again?
Teresa Brady.
I'm sorry?
Teresa Brady.
Okay, and then when everybody comes up, just say your name in the record, okay? You must be Ann Snackman?
Shackman.
Shack, oh, I'm sorry.
Close enough. That's okay. I'm a stakeholder, rate payer, L.A. DWP. Thank you for your water, which is filtered. I think it's quite ironic that the only person I saw here with a reusable cup is one of your guards, and I'm not sure where he went. So unless those are glass bottles, are they? In front of me? No. Well, okay, well, if you're role models, you're role models. That's my first point. My second point, I, I noticed, I noticed that you have nothing. Thank you very much. I applaud you, totally applaud you. It's such a simple thing to do. I clean up on the beach every day. I find styrofoam everywhere, water bottles everywhere. It's a no-brainer. Another no-brainer, we live in a city of so much sun, it's unbelievable that we can't use solar, like Germany does, and conserve water like Australia does. Australia does not allow watering of lawns, is a total waste of water.
Thank you very much. Lawrence Zeiss, Annalisa Amato, is Annalisa still here?
I'm here, I'm just, I'm just.
Okay, great. Paula Simeon? Is Paula here? Okay, she's gone. Brian Gordon, are you still here?
Yeah.
Okay, come on up. And then Robert Hall. And Jorge, I'm sorry, it looks like Joyce Dillard. Joyce Dillard here. And Connor Everts, or Everts. All right, you're our next speaker, sir. Just state your name for the record.
For the record, my name is Lawrence Zeiss. I have been an environmentalist for more than half my life, and I take these matters very seriously. I went vegan to reduce my carbon footprint. I drive very, very little. I recycle. However, when I turn on electrical light, I don't have a choice of how that power comes to my house, because I do not have a solar facility yet. So that choice falls onto you. You people are part of Los Angeles. We're the tastemakers of the world. What we do, everyone else in the world follows. So don't just think about what's popular and what's going to help you guys look good. Think about what your future and what you are giving to the world. Think about what your impact will be in your decisions. So in thinking about that, also realize that we can all make a change together. Thank you.
Thank you. Annalisa, is it, Annalisa Amato is next?
Hi, my name's Annalisa Amato, and I'm coming to say that scientists have determined that burning coal is dirty and does not meet our air quality standards, so ethically, we should not import coal-burning energy from Arizona or Utah. It's just, it's unethical, it's ethical, unethical for us to say one thing and then do another thing. Burning coal is toxic for people and the environment, contaminating the water and the air with mercury and other toxins. I strongly urge to move toward ending L.A. coal dependency by 2020. I strongly urge you to invest in our future. Coal is finite resource, which means it will inevitably start running out, and our costs will go up. It's time to invest in clean renewable energy sources, such as wind and solar. We need to invest in our future. The future is clean energy. Clean energy will create jobs, and over time, the cost will balance out, and let's go clean.
Thank you. Brian Gordon. And after Brian Gordon, we'll be Robert Hall, Connor Everts, or Everts, and then Deborah Weinstein, and then Alexis Soto.
My name is Brian Gordon. Thank you, Madam Chair, Committee members, Mr. Nichols. I'm grateful that we're having this discussion. You know, considering the uncertainty and controversy and the liability you've heard about the folks that live in Utah and about the folks that live in Utah and Arizona, you know, it's a no-brainer that there's a liability for the city and for the residents and ratepayers of Los Angeles to continue to pollute the air, the ground, and the aquifers in Arizona. There's a liability there, there's a cost to that liability. The sooner we get off the coal addiction, the sooner we absolve ourselves and the city and the ratepayers of that liability. You know, I just put solar on my house about a month and a half ago, and I'm still waiting for the Department of Water and Power to come by and put a net meter on like some others of us in this room. It would be nice to have the DWP be an ardent, robust, aggressive collaborator in getting solar on everybody's house. Any of you who've been lucky enough to fly in an airplane over the city, you see miles and miles and acres of rooftops. You know, we have a captive audience of rooftops in Los Angeles that needs to be leveraged. Thank you.
Robert Ha?
Good morning, all. My name is Robert Ha. I guess I'll just be reiterating comments that you've already heard, but the science of what we're doing to the atmosphere and the oceans is unequivocal. These changes are happening, you see the evidence all around us. We have to believe what we see. We, as a society, have accepted all the products of science, but we seem to be ignoring its methods. We have to wake up and see what's going on and take the appropriate actions. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you're, well Joyce, you're not Joyce.
No, I'm Connor Everts.
Oh, oh, sorry, Tom. Okay, go ahead. And then Joyce.
Thank you very much. My name is Connor Everts. I'm the Executive Director of the Southern California Watershed Alliance. I'm also co-chair of Green LA's Urban Ecosystems and Water Committee. I also sit on the R-WAG, and for many years, I've been promoting greater conservation and reclamation. We're still living off our laurels, but the plans set out here will move us forward. We need to reinvest in conservation. As was mentioned, biggest use of energy in this state is actually pumping water over the Tehachapi, so anything we can do to offset that impacts the greenhouse gases. While I'm in agreement with all the people, they could almost all stand up at this point if they don't get to speak, who are here to get off coal, we have to make the link to water, we have to make the link to saving the cost of the wholesaler, the Metropolitan Water District, who's raised rates 72%. We have to look at the community-based organizations which got us to that high level of conservation where we have not increased demand since 1978. We have a lot of opportunities here. There were a lot of people here earlier that couldn't speak, but lastly, I'd like to thank you for your leadership on the ones through cooling and that we can go and do agreement on that. Thank you very much.
Okay, Joyce Dillard is our next speaker, then Joyce, then Deborah Weinstein, then Alexis Soto, then Jason Dickerson, and Matt Solinsky. Okay, Joyce.
I think we have to start with assumptions. I was at a Blue Ribbon Committee Metropolitan Water District presentation on basically recycled water, but there was scientists in the audience from JPL who can't even make the assumption we're not going to have water up north. So put in the science with this as you look forward, because recycled water is part of proposition, one of the most expensive, half a billion dollar propositions, that's been a total waste of money, high cost, you're sitting on the report, which is very poor. It needs to come out, and we need to address it. We need to address Title 24 Energy Efficiency Planning should be sitting here. That's what counts. Let's talk about power. Anschlitz Corporation owns the natural gas that we have bought. They also own TransWest Express, who's a transmissions line for some of the renewable energy. We have a silent partner in the city that's making demands in other areas like the stadium, and we in the audience don't even know. This needs to be more transparent, we need to look at renewable energies, the shortages that the California Transmission Planning Group is looking at, and really do long-term planning that counts for us. Thank you.
Deborah Weinstein?
Great, thank you. Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Deborah Weinstein. I'm here on behalf of Tree People as well as the Green LA Coalition. I'd like to comment on the water system priorities. There's a bunch of us here, but I think our cards are at the bottom. As the General Manager stated, MWD has announced that it's going to decrease our water imports by half in the future, which means that local water supply reliability has to make up the other half: storm water capture and infiltration, recycled water and conservation. We do know firsthand that DWP and its sister agencies in the city have been doing a lot more in this area, and we'd like to compliment you on that. However, our concern is that this budget puts these programs at the bottom of the list for funding, and I want to be clear, we don't think there's anything more nuts and bolts than water, a local water supply. So these are our basic needs and should be in the basic budget, not in another tier. Ultimately, this will save the city money, create jobs, and provide water security for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexis Soto, John, Jason Dickerson, Matt Solinsky, and then Emily Miller, and then Paloma Enriquez.
Hi, my name's Alexis Soto. I'm a ratepayer here in Los Angeles, live in Echo Park and have for five years. I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and say that we have both a financial and a moral imperative to get us off of coal by 2020. I've done some traveling here in the US, and I've been to Utah. I stopped by that power plant, and in a small diner nearby, I spoke with a pregnant teen who expressed how concerned she was about the health aspects of her unborn child and of the community that surrounds her. Every time that we, as DWP customers, flip our switches on, we are poisoning whole communities in other states. We cannot afford to be not-in-my-backyard type of city. And we also have a financial responsibility to our ratepayers to be able to invest in common-sense energy efficiency programs that will save the city money, that will create jobs, and also invest in renewable technologies like wind and solar that are real solutions that will protect ratepayers' bills in the future, unlike dirty fossil fuels whose rates will continue to go up. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Dickerson, Matt Solinsky, and then if Taryn Wright would join the line, if she's still here, Taryn Wright, Matt Solinsky.
Hi, my name's Jason Dickerson. I'm also a resident in Echo Park and avid voter in local elections, and I would just like to say that I too firmly believe that we need to be off of coal by 2012, and that I think the 33% number is a bit ridiculous, especially living in a city like Los Angeles that is so obsessed with spreading outward instead of upward. The amount of rooftops and availability for solar energy and for the ability to retrofit buildings for solar energy is immense. It's greater here than almost anywhere in the country, and to not utilize that is absolutely a waste, absolutely inefficient, and absolutely wrong. So please, help us invest in the right thing. Thanks.
Matt Solinsky.
Hi, my name is Matt Solinsky. I'm an environmental activist. I think it's actually ridiculous that we're still using coal, spewing over 1,200 pounds mercury lead into our atmosphere. The Surgeon General warns the American public for women not to eat fish with mercury because it causes developmental problems in fetuses. Why are we going to spend for that medical bills that are going up every day? This is absolutely ridiculous that we're still on this, it's polluting our atmosphere, not in our backyard. Why, Mr. Nichols, would you put your children in an area next to a coal-fired power plant? Thank you.
All right, Emily Miller.
Hello, my name is Emily Miller. Our coal-powered plants emit as much climate-disrupting pollution as nearly 6 million cars. I can't imagine what this is doing to the communities and the people that live around these plants. We can see that our climate is changing in the way that our world is functioning right now. We have tornadoes and huge hailstorms all over our country, and we need to get off coal. So let's stop bringing coal in from other places like Utah and Arizona, and let's figure out what we can do in LA. Thank you.
Thank you. Paloma Enriquez, and if Todd Darling would join the line, if Todd is still here, come on up so you can get ready to speak. Paloma Enriquez.
Hi, my name is Paloma Enriquez. I live in Los Angeles, and I think that we need to move off of coal by 2020. I'm appalled that my electricity comes from coal-fired power plants in Utah and Arizona that are emitting carbon dioxide, sulfur dioxide, mercury, and small particulates. These coal-fired power plants are making people sick, they're killing people in other communities so that we can power our electronic products and our lights right here. And the crazy thing is, we don't have to be doing that. We can use wind, we can use solar, and it's up to you to do that, so please, please do. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, I think, is Andrea Idarosa. Is, what's your name?
I'm Taryn Wright.
Okay, okay, and then after you, then Andrea, okay, thank you.
I'd like to touch on the fact that we're getting our energy from another source, like what Alexis said, that girl's pregnant, and she's worried that the effects of coal burning are going to affect her unborn baby. Like, that's disgusting. What if we had these coal places right here in Los Angeles that's affecting your kids and yourself and people right over here? Would we still be burning coal to get energy? And secondly, the climate change. My aunt, Holly Fan, who lives in Massachusetts, was hiding in her basement for six hours for freak tornadoes just the other day. That's insane. Our climate's changing, coal is feeding into that, so we need to get off of coal and get better energy. Thank you, guys.
All right, Andrea. Say your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Andrea Idarosa. I live in Council District Four, and I work with the Greater Griffith Park Neighborhood Council. I am advocating getting off of coal by 2020. The phrase "clean coal" is an oxymoron. There is no such thing. The negative effects of coal energy on the air, to public health, and to our water supply make coal power unacceptable, and we can't afford the timeframe the DWP is now proposing. I urge you to make the transition to get off of coal power by 2020, and also, I would like to say that I second the comments made by the woman from Santa Monica Baykeepers and Tree People as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Rolando Salmeran, Marcy Winograd, is Marcy still here? Come on up. Todd Darling, it looks like Hazdev Singh, and Berta Avila. Rolando?
Okay, the government, Chinese government, planning for 120 years that the river is going to dry, you know, Yangtze, one of the major rivers over there. It happened three weeks ago, you know, they didn't plan, all the scientific were wrong over there. You know, one of the problem that we have over here, all the companies, solar power companies say, and renewable energy, is the water and power. You are the obstruction for them to go and do the green yard that the heart of the community here need. They asking to you, you are the leaders over here. You guys, the leaders over there, your sons, your daughters are in the line. A billion trees die, you know, in the Amazon, billion trees die over there, you know, that's the major thing. 250 tornadoes in one day over there in the New Week magazine last month. So you have to wake up, and all you guys have to wake up too, because this is going to affect everybody. It's not only local over here. You have to remember how those birds die over there, at the same time, fish die in Brazil over there, and crab die in New England too, so you have to wake up. This is all thing. We don't have to wait for the government over there, for the general government to, the president to, have to be local thing. No, we don't have the time to do. So you have responsibility to respond to the community here.
Thank you, sir.
This is the talk that we did, to respond to them, please.
Okay, thank you. Marcy Winograd? And so, what's your name, the fellow behind Marcy? What is your name?
Todd Darling. Yes.
Todd Darling, okay. But, okay, Todd, I don't know, I've got out of order. Let Marcy speak, and then I'll take you next, okay?
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm Marcy Winograd, co-chair, Progressive Democrats of Los Angeles. Though I live in Santa Monica, I teach at Crenshaw High School in Los Angeles, and I have been with LAUSD since 1993. Thank you for this opportunity to comment. I too support getting off coal by 2020. As with many urgent matters, it is really an issue of political will, not whether or not we can do it, but whether or not we are committed to doing it. And I would urge the City Council to sponsor a hearing, a meeting, a participatory effort where we can backward design how exactly we're going to get off coal by 2020, and hopefully that will be the next discussion. I would also urge you, although I am not a representative of the LA Unified School District, I do know as a high school teacher that we have a very active program developing small learning communities in our high schools. What better opportunity than to work with our area high schools to train the workforce that's going to create a sustainable city? We need vertical planning between our high schools, our community colleges, and our colleges to do this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now Todd Darling is our next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Todd Darling. I'm a homeowner, ratepayer, filmmaker. The, I'm supporting us getting off of coal by 2020. This presents us with both a dilemma and an opportunity. The dilemma is, we're contributing to the climate change if we can stop, the biggest contributor, our biggest contributor to climate change by closing down the plants by 2020. At the same time, we've got the opportunity to jumpstart a solar energy industry here in Southern California. Instead of sending the money to Utah, we can keep the money here. If DWP affirmatively and very actively starts the Feed and Tariff Program, we will have a means to finance people actually putting the solar panels onto the rooftops. The rooftops in Los Angeles, estimated by a study in UCLA, triple the amount of space needed to power Los Angeles on the hottest, most energy-intensive day of the year. So we have a huge resource that we can use here, and the Feed and Tariffs can help finance and give us an additional financial resource to put in place renewable energy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hazdev, is it Hazdev Singh or Jasdev?
Good morning. My name is Jasdev Singh. I'd like to say that I reiterate my support for phasing out the use of dirty power or power from coal. However, I'd like to say that time is of the essence. We need to invest in renewable energies now, and we need to make it very, we need to set a precedent for the other cities around the world. Thank you.
Okay, now, next, Berta Avila, Jasmine Vargas, Derry Herrera, Christina Scarborough, and I think it's Keyston, Lesnar, and Kitty Kroger. Okay, are you Berta?
No, Jasmine Vargas.
Is Berta still here?
I don't believe so.
Berta Avila, is she still here? Okay, I think Ms. Avila has left. Okay, Ms. Vargas, you're next.
Thank you. Esteemed Council and Honorable Commission, consider me your canary in the coal mine. I am here to say I support your commitments to replace coal-fired energy that is exacerbating climate change and polluting communities. Our coal plants are two of the worst in the country. Los Angeles' addiction to coal firepower creates a public health nightmare for our neighbors in Arizona and Utah. Not only can we succeed in going beyond coal by 2020, but as you can see today, we have an overwhelming support from ratepayers to prioritize energy efficiency and invest on our hard-earned money into renewable energy resources like wind and solar energy. There was evidence of this support last year when 73% of Angelenos voted to keep moving forward with our state's global warming law. I ask this committee, this commission, to fund the most aggressive renewable energy and environmentally sustainable integrated resource plan that has ever been implemented because frankly, we cannot afford not to, and we cannot afford to wait for the canary in the coal mine to stop singing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina Scarborough.
Hi, my name is Chrissy Scarborough, and I work for the Sierra Club here in Los Angeles. I also live at Roscoe in Coldwater in CD2. In my role with the Sierra Club, I coordinate our grassroots campaign to make sure that this city stops burning dirty and deadly coal by 2020 and replaces it with clean energy. Through my work, a few things have become clear. There is a public mandate to move beyond coal. More than 10,000 Angelenos and hundreds of small businesses, this is like 5,000 petitions right here, but people, can you stand up if you have gathered petitions in this city? Hundreds of small business owners are calling. We have over 300 small business owners that we've just talked to them, just talked to them and asked them about this. 18 neighborhood councils are now in agreement, and this support is not surprising because Angelenos have supported efforts to protect the environment for decades. Last year, 73% of Angelenos voted to keep moving forward with our state's global warming law and rejected Prop 23. So I just want to say, coal-fired power is a threat to LA DWP and its customers, and we need to transition to cleaner energy. Thank you.
Okay, Dario, Dario Herrera?
Hello. Hello, my name is Dario, and I go to Alessandra Elementary School, and I am with CJ, Collision for Educational Justice. Today, I have come to City Council to say hello. City Council and Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, I have come to tell you that you should get off of coal by 2020. I was watching this show about the twisters that have happened in 2011, and it said that the glaciers in North Pole are melting, so that creates more water vapor, which means more twisters. And this is happening because of global warming, and we in the USA are a great factor in pollution. So I urge you to get off the use of coal. There is more reasons to get off the coal, but it would go on and on forever. So I imp-
I am an LADWP ratepayer and a resident of District 13. I'd like to thank you Chair Perry, city council staff, and members for the opportunity to testify today. I heard Mr. Nichols discuss the once-through cooling mandate, but I didn't hear him say that LADWP intended to comply. So I would like to hear, or ask LADWP to commit to complying with the once-through cooling policy as adopted. There's flexibility within the policy, and so I would like LADWP to stop circumventing the process and commit to complying with the 2020 deadline. Chair Perry, I appreciate your leadership in bringing forth the initiative, and I echo the comments made by Liz Crossen, Mr. Pettit, and Connor Everett. Thank you.
Thank you. Kitty Kroger, Kent Minault, Jeffrey Smith, Frankie Berganza, and Albert Hernandez. Okay, are you Kent Minault?
Yes.
All right, Kent, come on up.
Yeah, hi, I'm Kent Minault. I'm a teacher and actor. I live in Sherman Oaks. And, you know, I really have nothing to add to what the people have said here, except that after watching your presentation and seeing the lovely pictures of windmills and solar panels up there, I think that the competence that's shown here is great, but you all seem to miss the sense of urgency that your employers are asking of you. And when I hear you saying that you're willing to continue to burn coal until 2027 and inflict incalculable pain on the citizens of this country by so doing, it seems to me that you're not listening to your boss. Get off coal by 2020. Couple of city council members have already committed to the goal. You need to follow their leadership and exercise leadership in LA. Other cities have already done this. We're falling far behind. Again, get off coal by 2020.
All right, thank you. Jeffrey Smith, Frankie Berganza, Albert Hernandez. I have a card here from somebody who didn't put a name on, but the organization is International Multicultural Education Association at 13668 Rayon Street in Arleta. So if that person's here, come on up. And then Gabrielle Smalley. All right, are you Jeffrey Smith?
Hello, I'm Jeffrey Smith. Yes. I'm here on behalf of myself, the environment, the world, and people living in other states that are having to deal with Los Angeles and where we get our power from and using coal to get it. Anyway, what I want to say is that we have tens of thousands of rooftops here in Los Angeles that need to be taken advantage of. And not only that, is that what I hear, what I gather from this already, is that the cost of coal is rising, the cost of gas is on the rise, and coal's not renewable. Once you burn it, it's gone. So you don't have any money, you're spending it on coal and gas, and the gas to move that coal, and then burning it, and creating all this pollution for the environment when you could just stick solar panels on tops of roofs. And if there's no sun out that day, I'm sure it's going to be windy, and you can put up windmills. So I say, you don't waste any more time, because every day that goes by is another day, and it's not getting us any closer to our goal, just waiting.
Thank you. Frankie Berganza. Albert Hernandez. After you.
Hi, I'm Frankie Berganza. I'm an artist, and I just got something to say. Quit thinking the ozone is at our disposal and change our proposal. Switch into solar panels or hydroelectric channels, now that's the tool, because you're doing lots of cruel by burning fossil fuel. Just realize that energy is a necessity, and let's stop and think of a remedy for the next generation so they don't see the problems we're facing. But who's going to stand up if it's not me, them, the Sierra Club, or the Greenpeace? If it's not for us, do for your kids at least. Jeez. Or they might just say, it's raining, it's storming, the toxins are pouring. Stand up for the problems of global warming and stop ignoring. So what's it going to be? Quit the confusion. Is it the new solution or the same old pollution?
All right, Albert Hernandez. Now after Albert, the person who said they are here on behalf of International Multicultural Education Association. If, are you still here?
They left.
Okay, all right, they left. Let me go on to the next so I can get this lined up. Gabrielle Smalley? Is Gabrielle here?
Yes, that's me.
Okay, great. So Albert Hernandez is gone. Okay, great. So after Gabrielle will be Jenny Bernstock. Jenny here? Okay, come on up. James Brennan, Blake Hodges, and Topanga Bird. Okay, Gabrielle?
Thank you. My name's Gabriel Smalley. I'm here as a ratepayer and a stakeholder in the LADWP. I'm here mainly because I, as part of the IRP process, I came in and I participated in that process. What I heard over and over and over again was LADWP reps comparing themselves to other publicly-owned utilities and saying, we're doing a little bit better than PG&E or the other investor-owned utilities, over and over and over again. I think that we can do better than that. I think that we can get off coal by 2020. We should stop comparing ourselves to the other cities around us. This is Los Angeles. We're the best city on earth. I'd like to challenge the LADWP to act like it and to set an example for the rest of the, the rest of the country. Additionally, this makes good economic sense in terms of investing in our future. Bring my money back from Utah and Arizona and put it into my community, please.
Thank you. Jenny Bernstock? And then Patty Sharaf? If Patty Sharaf is still here, have Patty come up too. Jenny?
Hi, thank you for having me here today. I'm Jenny Bernstock. I'm a field organizer for Greenpeace here in Los Angeles, and I very much appreciate this is a very inclusive public process, and I look forward to participating. So I oversee our work here to help create a coal-free LA by 2020, and in less than six months, our organization has collected close to 4,000 petitions, recruited over 300 local businesses to endorse the campaign, turned out hundreds to public events and activities, and have had hundreds agree to call their member of city council about this particular issue of coal. The injustices and the destruction associated with the coal industry are not burdens that the leadership of our city or LADWP ratepayers should have to bear. The rest of the country and the world, of course, is looking to cities like Los Angeles to make sure that we're rising to the challenge of powering our future in a way that is equitable and sustainable. So as we move forward with the public comment process, we really hope to see that the discussion about our rates reflects the reality of our situation, that coal is expensive, and that clean energy and energy investments right now in efficiency are the way to protect ratepayers. Thank you.
Okay, James Brennan is next. Blake Hodges, Topanga Bird, Patty Sharaf, and then if Meredith McCarthy is still here, Meredith, if you would come up and join the line. James Brennan?
Thank you, Madam Chair, council members, commissioners, and Mr. Nichols for engaging the public in this important moment. I'm James Brennan with Open Neighborhoods. Our organization is working with neighborhood communities across the city on community renewables projects. So far, neighborhood councils in Los Angeles, Mar Vista, Venice, and Silver Lake have all voted for 100% clean power by 2018. Those votes were all unanimous. Those councils are diverse, they're elected, and they represent their communities. Residents and businesses in those communities are voting with their wallets. They're signing contracts, they're writing checks. Unfortunately, many, many of them are on hold. A lot of people are waiting for DWP. They're waiting for permits, they're waiting for approvals, they're waiting for rebate checks. Six months ago, council asked DWP for a three-month moratorium on January 1st to get the program back in order. Six months later, we still have a moratorium, and Mr. Nichols said it would resume, but did not specify a date. If there is not a date, then say that, and others will come and finance those rebates. But there needs to be clarity, there needs to be transparency, and there needs to be follow-through, and local net metering solar is one of our most cost-effective sources of renewable energy. We need to invest.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Blake Hodges, and then is Topanga Bird here? Okay, and then Patty Sharaf, Meredith McCarthy. Is Meredith here? Okay, Meredith is gone. And then Wes, or Weiss Hamid, is Weiss Hamid here? Okay, come on up. And then Joe Clifford. Is Joe Clifford still here? Okay, come on up. Okay, great. Blake?
Hi, my name is Blake Hodges. I'm a ratepayer and a resident of Los Angeles. I love this city. I do not love the fact that we source so much of our power from coal, out-of-state especially. I'm not going to repeat everything that's said, although I agree with most of it. I will say that, I'm sure you're familiar with the saying, "The customer is always right." We are customers of LADWP, and we demand that LA get off of coal by 2020. Thank you.
Topanga Bird?
Thank you. Thank you, members of the council, other city officials. The Green Party has much to say about this issue and will be an active participant in our discussions. I have just one thing to say to you right now. The city of Los Angeles and the Department of Water and Power currently spend billions of dollars in buying petroleum products to provide our electricity and our water. A portion of that money buys the bullets that kills our troops and the bombs and the planes that kill and injure our citizens. 2020 is not early enough. 2030 is not early enough. The time to bring our money home, my money, is now. Bring our money home.
Thank you. Patty Sharaf? Is Patty gone? Okay, Patty's gone. Are you Weiss Hamid?
Yeah.
Okay, and then if Patrick Gunn would come up too. Let's see, I guess Joe Clifford is gone too. Joe Clifford's gone? Okay, Weiss Hamid, you're up.
Sorry, let me put this on like ogre level right here. Good morning, council members. My name is Weiss Hamid, and I'm a recent UCLA graduate and resident of Woodland Hills. I'm here, much like the people around me, to help move LA beyond coal by 2020. I've actually personally talked to residents and local business owners in Eric Garcetti's, Tom Labonge, Paul Krikorian, and Tony Carness's districts. I also plan on hitting up the rest of the council member districts, I'm moving along, and had nearly universal support in putting a more, putting more investment in renewable energies in local communities and getting rid of coal by 2020. LADWP and the LA City Council both are supposed to represent public interest, as it is, as it is these residents who pay the bills and vote. So with the impending rise of, rise of the cost of coal, it makes more financial sense to put our investment here in California instead of the continued shipping of our residents' money to an outdated energy source. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Joe Clifford? Is Joe Clifford here? Joe Clifford? How about Lauren Keenan? Are you here? Okay, Lauren, come on up. And then Cara Andres, are you here? Come on up. Patrick Gunn? Is Patrick Gunn here? All right, Jeff? It looks like Legoski? Jeff Legoski? Okay. Roxana Flores, are you here? Okay, Roxana, come on up. And then Zachary Frank? Come on up. Taryn Hipwell? All right. Go ahead. State your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Lauren Keenan, and I'm an LADWP customer, and I'm also a volunteer, and I spend a lot of time each month on this campaign to get coal out of LA. And I just want to say to you that Los Angeles needs a fully-funded efficiency program to protect customers' rising energy costs. I'm getting a call. Hello? Okay, I'll tell them. That was the people of LA, and they want LA off of coal.
Thank you. All right, Cara Andres?
Hi, my name is Cara Andres. I would like to thank you for giving me the chance to speak today. I'm actually from a small town in Missouri, and it seems like every day when I call my mother, she tells me about another tornado that's ripping through our communities there. What's even worse is that every day when I turn on the lights, as a DWP customer, I have to be supporting out-of-state polluting coal plants that devastate the environment, are harmful to people's health, and contribute to global warming. Climate change is real, and it's time for LA to get off of coal. It's time for LA to be a leader in clean energy and to set an example for places all over the United States, and to protect our environment, to protect our health, and to protect our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Gunn? Jeff Legoski? Roxana Flores? Okay, so Patrick, is Patrick gone? Okay, Patrick must be gone. Jeff Legoski? Is Jeff gone? Okay, Roxana, you're next. And then after Roxana, Zachary Frank? Taryn Hipwell? Is Taryn Hipwell still here? Okay, great. And then Libby Goldstein? Are you still here? Libby Goldstein? Come on? Are you here? Okay, come on up. And then Adele Lutz? Is Adele still here? Okay, Adele's gone. Okay, great. We're almost done. All right, Roxana?
Hi, my name is Roxana Flores, and I'm a resident of District 15. I'm here today because I'm extremely concerned about the effects of coal on our environment and our health. Living in the harbor area allows one to witness the effects of pollution from cargo trucks, refineries, and the cargo ships. It's so disheartening to see the respiratory and cardiovascular illnesses in children and all residents in these lower-income communities. And to find out that residents in Arizona and Utah are facing the same reality is very troubling. To think that in the near future, Arizona and Utah residents could be living without the worry of excavation casualties, water contamination, or pollution from these power plants makes me wonder, why do we continue to ask these people to risk their livelihood so that we can receive our cheap power? Let us be the driving force against climate change and unnecessary deaths. Thank you.
Thank you. Zachary Frank? Are you Zachary Frank? Great. And then is Quasi Nukuma still here? Come on up.
Thank you to all the organizers. My name is Zachary Frank. I am a musician and audio engineer, like many in the city. Obviously, this is only a small sampling of the entire Los Angeles community, but these are the people passionate enough to wake up before 9:00 AM on a Saturday morning. And of these people, if you're here in this room today, a beautiful room, by the way, because you're passionate about continuing to provide 40% of the energy to Los Angeles by burning coal in Arizona and Utah, please raise your hand. Don't be scared. Okay? And those for switching to sustainable renewable resources, please raise your hands. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Taryn Hipwell? Are you Taryn? And then Libby Goldstein, Quasi Nukuma, Heather Meyer? Is Heather Meyer still here? Come on up, Heather. Jessica Foot and Encore Patel? Is Encore Patel still here? All right, come on up and join the line, and that is the last of our cards. Libby Goldstein?
Hi, my name is Taryn Hipwell. I have a site called Eco Divas, and I also educate at Fidham and at Environmental Charter High School. I typically teach about film and the fashion industry and the toxic chemicals that go down the drain. This is kind of the same thing, because the amount of mercury that is generated into the air that it's washed into the water streams from coal also affects the water streams that go into educational systems and is in the drinking water. So I feel it's kind of a circular motion of trying to stop the coal burning, to save lives, and also, I want to reiterate that youth and lower-income families both are very concerned about these types of issues, as well as the fact that there are a lot of people around the world that do look to Los Angeles for trends, and not to say that I feel that this should be a trend, but I feel like if Los Angeles really takes this on, that a lot of other people are watching and they'll pay attention.
Thank you. Okay, now, Libby Goldstein?
Hi, my name is Libby Lee Goldstein. I speak today as an individual and an activist, and I stand with more than 10,000 Angelenos, hundreds of small businesses, and Greenpeace. I helped organize the rally in October that Eric Garcetti, where Eric Garcetti said that he wanted Los Angeles to get off of coal by 2020.
Come on up, Heather. Jessica Foote and Encore Patel. Is Encore Patel still here? All right, come on up and join the line and that is the last of our cards. Libby Goldstein.
Hi, my name is Taryn Hipwell. I have a site called Eco Divas and I also educate at FIDM and at Environmental Charter High School. I typically teach about film and the fashion industry and the toxic chemicals that go down the drain. This is kind of the same thing because the amount of mercury that is generated into the air that it's washed into the water streams from coal also affects the water streams that go into educational systems and is in the drinking water. So I feel it's kind of a circular motion of trying to stop the coal burning, to save lives, and also I want to reiterate that youth and lower-income families both are very concerned about these types of issues, as well as the fact that there are a lot of people around the world that do look to Los Angeles for trends and, not to say that I feel that this should be a trend, but I feel like if Los Angeles really takes this on, that a lot of other people are watching and they'll pay attention.
Thank you. Okay, now Libby Goldstein.
Hi, my name is Libby Lee Goldstein. I speak today as an individual and an activist and I stand with more than 10,000 Angelinos, hundreds of small businesses, and Greenpeace. I helped organize the rally in October that Eric Garcetti, where Eric Garcetti said that he wanted Los Angeles to get off of coal by 2020. I was born and raised in Los Angeles and have asthma from the pollution we've created, asthma I wasn't born with. I refuse to be quiet or inactive on the issue of pollution. And the pollution around the plants in Utah and Arizona on the Navajo Reservation results in 1,200 pounds of mercury that the people around the area have to breathe. The Los Angeles Department of Power is owned by us, the public, who pays bills every other month. And at what cost do we continue this destruction? I love this city and know we can get off of coal by 2020. This is one of the few parts of the country where solar could be efficient and possible. The time has come for us to invest in our own lives and be leaders in clean energy. We all know it's right.
All right, Quasi Nukuma?
Yes, my name is Quasi Nukuma. I'm here on behalf of the Martin Luther King Coalition for Jobs, Justice, and Peace. We're a network of approximately 60 organizations throughout the Los Angeles area of many different types and activists, everything from the labor movement to religious communities to community organizations, again, of many different types and concerns. In the 1930s, in the fourth year of the 1930s, there were massive public works programs in place. There were increases of assistance to people in need. There was action taken to keep people in their homes. Now, the government at that time was also deeply in debt. The large banks had already failed many of them. So the problem at that time and the problem now was not so much a problem of money, it was a problem of leadership. And we are feeling a great problem with leadership throughout the country right now and we'd like to see some action. We need green jobs generated and a conversion of this economy and we need some leadership from those of you who are in responsible positions to do that.
Thank you, sir.
And we'd like you to join us in bringing pressure on the federal government
Thank you very much.
to generate the funds
Okay, I'm gonna have to cut you off because I want to let everybody speak. Thank you. Heather Meyer, and then Jessica Foote, and then Encore Patel.
Hello, my name is Heather Meyer and I am the Chair of Coffee Party LA, which is also a founding member of the MLK Coalition for Jobs, Justice, and Peace. We support the effort to kick coal out of LA by 2020 and I'm also proud to say that my neighborhood council in Silver Lake has also endorsed that effort. Since there's been so much said about that today, I'd actually like to focus on the fact that the LADWP is actually largely depending on natural gas to fund our generation plants. I find this completely unacceptable, especially since this is the agency that provides our water. Natural gas poisons our water resources and it is an incredibly wasteful use of water. I'd also like to stop hearing our representatives say that renewables are expensive. If it weren't for the corporate welfare that nuclear and oil and coal receives, it would not be so cheap.
Thank you. Jessica Foote?
Hi, I'm Jessica Foote and I'm 14 years old. I go to LA Unified School District School and many teachers around are getting laid off. I think if we stopped using coal for energy resources, that would raise money all around the city to give people more jobs and it's a really healthy way to give energy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Encore Patel?
Thank you. It was great to see so many people here at the beginning of the day. I think it's pretty noticeable that a lot of people have left. And what made this meeting so special that people showed up? We had a lot of important people in the room today. How many people here have been to an energy and environment committee meeting before, right, out of the activists? See, the people at the end of this, more likely than before. But we need to show up regularly, right? We can't protest nine to five. We can't show up to one meeting and expect things to change, right? The pressure has to be continuous, it has to be a movement. The environmental movement needs to take on some of the aspects of the civil rights movement and really turn into not showing up for half a meeting and then leaving. And I really challenge, say, Greenpeace and the Sierra Club to really show up for these energy environment committees. Bring five people every time. Have talking points. We have talking points? You never see people organize talking points at these public meetings. But this needs to be a regular thing and don't think because you showed up here today, it made a difference. You have to show up every day to make a difference.
Thank you. That marks the end of our cards for today and I want to express my appreciation for my fellow colleagues who have joined me today, Mr. Krikorian, and to the Department of Water and Power Commissioners for taking time here today and to be here in chambers to have this joint meeting, and Mr. Nichols for making your presentation. Thank you very much. This is and all the staff, of course. This is just the beginning and also to all of you who submitted cards and spoke today and even to those who did not submit cards and speak today, appreciate you taking your time. This is just the beginning of what will be a very long and laborious process. Please take with you the dates and locations for the community collaboration sessions, first of which will be June 16th in the West Valley at the Holiday Inn at Warner Center. I think it's extremely important that we get as much public participation as possible so that we can really give the department substantive input in a more intimate setting. So thank you for your time and this is the part of the agenda. For those wishing to comment on items that are not on the agenda, they can come forward. I have two cards. One is for Arnold Sachs. Is Arnold Sachs still present? Arnold Sachs? And Dr. Clyde Williams? Is Dr. Williams still here? All right, neither individuals are present, so I will adjourn the meeting and again, thank you to everybody who participated today. Thank you.